...leaders in both communities that oppose it. Our city clerk studies found that they couldn't document this area being called Sherman Oaks, and many people view this as a swipe of Van Nuys. So I would like to suggest a Solomon-like conclusion to this, and one of two choices. One, we could name it Van Oaks, make it sort of a demilitarized zone. Or a more serious suggestion would be akin to what I think Tony was saying also, to hold this item for six months until we actually have a current council member to weigh in on what would happen in the district that they represent.
Stating he has a different take on the decision of Solomon, District 6 Council Member Richard Aldercon brings up the issue of redistricting and says he supports the name change.
When I walked into the committee meeting, I had intended to take no position and just let the cards fall where they may and let the community argue to the council. But when I heard the arguments, it was clear to me that the people of this particular area, by vast majority, support the change, for whatever reason. And the question I have is, how do we define, number one, why do we even have a dumb process if we know we're just going to go with whatever the council member says? And number two, how do we define what arguments have merit? I mean, if they choose to, you know, when somebody wants to change their name in court, all they have to do is fill out a little paper, and I think they pay like five or ten bucks, and boom, it's done. Why do we have to come up with all kinds of criteria about this name change? If they want it because they perceive that it will increase the values of their property, so be it. If they want it for other reasons, like them or not, who are we to say they can't have that name change? Now frankly, had the council member been opposed to the name change, you know, I would have worked very hard to accommodate the council member. Because my assumption is the council member knows best about their community and what their community needs. Not to say that I'll do whatever the council member says, we've had our disagreements, obviously. But, in the case of a name change, look, I've gone through name changes, I've authorized name changes, and I've moved name changes, and it ain't something that's very easy. So my assumption is the council member worked very hard to figure out what she was going to do in this case. So it did weigh heavily on me that the council member, after going through that process, and in committee they did demonstrate that they went through that process, felt that this community was entitled to the name change. I do want to differ, I know that Tony Cardenas is fighting for Van Nuys to keep it as a whole. If we really believed that, then we should have fought in the redistricting process to keep Van Nuys in the shape that it wasn't. Why is it that we stood up to a redistricting process that allowed for this particular community to be separated from the other parts of Van Nuys? There's a reason for that. And probably a multitude of reasons, but one of the reasons is, it was probably more like the other community. And so, there's a whole bunch of, we could get into the rationale. At the end of the day, to me, it boils down to the fact that the vast majority of people who live in that area, which is about ninety percent residential, want to change their name. And as Solomon, the mother needs to let her child go for the well-being of the child.
Standing to rescind his delay motion, District 5 Council Member Paul Coretts now explains how he will vote.
I think I can see where this discussion is going. I'm going to withdraw my motion. It's a hard call, but I think my vote is going to go with the people that are empowered and have done the work to make this community part of Sherman Oaks.
We now have the proposal, the report from the Education and Neighborhoods Committee before us. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes, two noes.
That is approved.
After the ten to two vote, the community of Sherman Oaks has become larger despite opposition from both the Van Nuys and Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Councils. You can watch city council meetings live or view past meetings by going to the city's website at lacity.org and follow the instructions for video on demand. We invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown, do City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And now, those of you living in the Harbor area can go to the San Pedro City Hall located at 638 South Beacon Street, Room 700 in San Pedro, and also participate in council meetings via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. and on Sundays at 9:30 a.m. That concludes our program for the week ending July 10, 2009. On behalf of Jack Pope, Joey, and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Mike Kaufman. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the city of Los Angeles, when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
911, emergency.
I have a patient with an illness, her daughter, she's four years old. Her name's Denim.
I lost my puppy, can you help me?
We have a critical missing. There is an Amber Alert, so let's look for any information you get, pass that into the Watch Commander, let's be careful out there.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
I think we're in less than this is made of.
Push agents at 7852123, we're looking for a vehicle on the weekend, hard corner of the town market, suspect likely in 1958, last since 1958, white suit, taking his currency.
Seven eight, five hundred.
All units, we're in pursuit of a two of the suspects, some of the houses were forced to attack them, any area that could be affected, district I and C.
Every road is booked.
Seven hours, five minutes.
To protect and to serve.
All units, call for a left-hand deputy suspect.
Standing with our community.
Y'all seen a police department this morning issued an hour alert. The suspect is driving a black car Pacific.
Working as a team.
Hey, what's up?
I think I saw that car that you were looking for.
Is yours?
Yeah.
That's good.
They take pride in what they do.
Day nine, ten code six on the air.
And when duty calls, the LAPD responds.
A positive on the vehicle.
Roger. Last luck to a positive on the Amber Alert vehicle.
It looks like they found the car.
The LAPD is hiring. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Thank you to council members LeBonge, Hahn, and Zine. We're all here, we are waiting the rest of the council, and we have a manager, R.C. D., and we're expecting everybody else. Mr. President, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Westen, and Mr. Westen. We're here in the John F. R. Council Chambers in Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And we welcome those of you who are here in council chambers with us this morning, as well as those who are viewing us on Channel 35. Channel 35 is a service of the city of Los Angeles and broadcasts our meetings live on the city's cable system and rebroadcasts each evening those very same meetings. We also are available online through the city's homepage at lacity.org, which has a wealth of information on city services and departments, but also has a link on the left side that allows you to watch live webcasts of our council meetings and has archived footage of our past council meetings. Those are linked closely to our council agendas as well, which are available online or in person here in the city clerk's office. Those agendas are made available 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for our special agenda items, and those are broken down into items that have had public hearings in committee and those that have not yet had a public hearing. All items receive a public hearing either in committee or here in council. It requires a council member to reopen the public hearing here in council for any items that have already had one in committee. If you'd like to be heard on any of the items that are before us, please fill out a speaker card in the back, or avail yourself of our service in Van Nuys and San Pedro to be able to testify remotely from those locations if it's closer to where you live. And we'll make sure to get your card in the mix, and if you'd like to say anything of a general nature on items that are not on our agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles, just fill out a speaker card and put "Public Comment," hand it one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll be sure to include that in your meeting here. I want to thank those council members who are here on time. Our city council rules ask that all council members be here at the start of the meeting. It is 10 minutes after the time of the meeting, so the following council members are late. Council members Alarcon, Cardenas, Coretts, Perry, Reyes, and Smith. Mr. Parks is excused today, and Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weezer, Mr. LeBonge, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Weston, and Mr. Zine are here, and we appreciate that very much. So if those council members could come down immediately, we'll begin our meeting as soon as we have 10 members, or two-thirds of our 15-member body, which constitutes a quorum, which is the minimum number to be able to conduct business. So we thank you for your patience while we wait those council members who are late. Council members Alarcon, Cardenas, Coretts, Perry, Reyes, and Smith, thank you. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weezer, Coretts, LeBonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Weston moves, Mr. Zine seconds, without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. LeBonge seconds, without objection, those will be approved as well, if we can please run through the agenda.
First items on the agenda are items noticed for public hearings. The first group are building and safety liens, and the department is recommended on items three and four that those can be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid.
Okay, if there's no objection, we will receive and file three and four.
And that would leave 1, 2, 5, and 6, 4 confirmation.
Okay, we have no cards from the public on those items. Anybody wishing to call 1, 2, 5, or 6 special? 1, 2, 5, or 6. If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll then, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Those are approved, next item, please.
Next items are also public hearing items, there are appeals against sidewalk maintenance assessments, those are items seven through 10.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call those special? Appeals on the sidewalk maintenance assessments? If not, let's go ahead then and please prepare the roll on those, and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Okay, those are approved, next item?
Next items are street vacations, items 11 and 12. And the recommendation for council action is to instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Okay, is anybody wishing to call those special from the council? We have no speaker cards on those, so we'll open and close those public hearings. If there's nobody wishing to call those special, let's take them up together. Please open the roll on 11 and 12, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 13 through 37. Council has commissioners on 14 through 17. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold the commissioners on the desk. That leaves us with 13 through 37. Mr. Smith first.
13 for amendment.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
23.
23 for Mr. Zine, Ms. Perry?
I wanted 23, continued for two weeks.
23?
Continued for two weeks.
Is that right, Mr. Zine? 23, Ms. Perry moved to continue for...
I just have a question, because I don't know anything about this chair of the committee.
Mr. Yamaki, who is representing the concession that at this point is losing, has made a request to me that I put in a request to continue it for two weeks so he can be here to represent his clients.
Okay. Mr. LeBonge as chair?
Mr. Mukri is here, the general manager on this here. I think he should sit on the desk if he can talk about it.
Let's call it special right now, and Ms. Perry's motion to continue will be part of what is before us when we take it up. Are there specials, colleagues?
And Mr. President, there's also a request on item number 29 to continue that matter to the 28th.
Is there any objection to continuing 29 until July 28? If not, let's go ahead and do that. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on the balance, and please tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved, next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 38 through 61. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are commissioners on items 38, 39, and 40.
Okay, let's go ahead and call the commissioners special. Do we have cards from the public on any of the other items?
There are cards on 51, 54, 55, 56, 61, and, excuse me, 61.
Okay, we'll open and close the hearings on the other ones. Mr. Reyes?
Council President, we can continue items 60 till Friday if possible.
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll continue till the 29th. That is item number 60.
24.
Sorry, it's the 24th. Mr. LeBonge?
61.
61, we have special for cards, and we'll put your name alongside that, Mr. LeBonge. Are there specials, colleagues? We'll open and close the public hearings for the balance of those. If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved, if we can send 46 forthwith without objection to the mayor. Next items, please.
Next items are, excuse me, next item is 62, and that's a closed session, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold the closed session on the desk, and if we can call the roll for, we'll take the continuation agenda, and then we'll come back to the special meeting.
The continuation agenda, items 64 and 65 are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right, we will have 64, and that's cards special, so we'll call that special right now. If we can call the roll for the special meeting, please.
I'm sorry, did there...
Oh, is there another item?
Yes, 65 is still before council, and then also 66.
Okay, and we have cards on 65?
65 has had its hearing.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call that special? If not, let's open the roll on 65, and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, that is approved.
And also on 66, there is a card on that item.
Okay, we'll call that special for card from public, and if we can go to the special meeting and call the roll, please.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weezer, Coretts, LeBonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, and this is a legal matter as well?
Yes, it is, it's a closed session item.
All right, we'll call that special for closed session, temporarily recess the special meeting, and go back to the regular meeting. All right, we'll take our public comment now. Dr. Clyde Williams is our first speaker. After that will be Michael Hunt.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno.
Dr. Clyde Williams, four-one-one-five Barrett Road, El Cerrino. Shame. Shame on the council. Item fifty-four. I came to L.A. thirty years ago because of the diversity and the tolerance within this community. Item fifty-four. I just don't know why. I saw the Ku Klux Klan in Arkansas—
Sir, if you don't mind, and I'm sorry to interrupt. Rule fifty, on the item fifty-four, we should speak in general comment for items that are not on the agenda? So if we can save that for item fifty-four, we'll be sure to call on you, but this is for items now, not on the—
I already submitted a card.
Okay. So if you could just make sure that right now we don't talk about—
That was the one reference. No more references.
Thank you.
I don't want to be disruptive, insolent, boisterous, tending to interrupt, but I saw the Ku Klux Klan in Arkansas and Oklahoma as a child. My father was boycotted. His restaurant was boycotted for two weeks because he served brown bags to two black men out of the front door. That was considered insolent to the community at that time. I joined the Student Peace Union in nineteen fifty-eight through sixty-four. I was in Berkeley nineteen sixty-six through seventy-six. I've seen it. I've been in totalitarian dictatorships. You have honored Russell Kima, which is a non-democratic province of the UAE. I've been in Iran. At least they have elections. UAE does not. I have also worked in Iran, where the statement of Al-Wahid Akbar is considered defiant, insolent to the regime at the present time. Let us not start the slippery slope here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Michael Hunt is our next speaker. After that is Anthony Wayne Ford. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. One thing that I'm really outraged about, and I really didn't realize what the city attorney was saying yesterday, is that they're going to try and prosecute Ms. Perry criminally for something that she did an excellent job for. Let me put this on the record. Ms. Perry did an ex—
If I could just correct right now that that was never stated by the city attorney yesterday. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. But she did a good job with this, given all the tools she had in the four days. The sack lunches are gone, and Michael Jackson is dead. We need to move on as far as trying to waste city time on this. I don't even like Ms. Perry, but she was right what she did, and I really have to speak up. She's African-American, and I'm not going to let this go down so into the city attorney. You need to refocus your energy on somebody else other than Ms. Perry, because, like I said, I may not care for her, but it's not going down like that. She did a good job with the resources given to her, and, you know, had it would have went the other way, everybody would have said, "Oh." But, you know, I really have to stand by Ms. Perry on this one, and, like I said, refocus the energy on something positive with this. So, you know, I just really had to dedicate this two minutes to something that's right. You know, city attorney, Newt, or whatever, you know, please, please focus in, because Ms. Perry's safe.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anthony Wayne Ford. After that is Arnold Sachs. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Let the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable in thy sight, O Lord, my rock and my redeemer. At nine-thirty last night, I received a phone call from a great friend, Dora Pennell and Janet Williams. Their mother is in a senior, Cedar Sinai Intensive Care Unit, and the concern is they're on Medicare, and everything is being taken care of through Medicare except for the doctor fee. And it's a life-threatening illness. It may be cancer, what they found around her pancreas. They're going to, she's been in the hospital for ten days, and they're going to remove her today because they can't come up with ten thousand dollars. And I think this is an outrage. They live in West Hollywood, and they're going to continue to think about releasing her today, whether, they said they were going to release her today. And I, her mother's Nancy Williams, she's sixty-three years old. And I'm here because I'm doing a call-out. I want to know who's the city council person for that district. I have the young lady's phone number, Janet Williams. It's one-eight-four-eight-eight-zero-four-eight-three-three-three-two-three area code. And they called me last night to see if there was anything that I can do or call out so this situation won't take place. She's in West Hollywood. And so if anybody can assist me to assist them, then thank you very much.
Thank you. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. After Mr. Sachs will be Rick Nightingale in Van Nuys. And thank you, Mr. Labange, for assisting our last speaker on that item.
Good morning. Thank you. Arnold Sachs. Stunned and saddened by the actions during yesterday's council discussion regarding the marathon. Stunned because another opportunity to get a minimum of accountability from this council snuffed out by the tsunami of wonderfulness that embraced the council regarding this phony settlement and the marathon. No discussion of what it cost the city, no discussion about how it was rammed through the city process because it needed to occur back in September. No accountability. All the reasons that were listed by the C.A.O. or the C.E.O. that was given in a report here, they existed before the change was made. Now to bring them to light, and thank goodness the children be able to run in March. So the race has been moved back two weeks instead of the opportunity that was discussed in council chambers so serendipitously, so shadily, because of the references made by Councilman Parks and the C.A.O. in discussing the move to February, when it was held, when the meeting was held in September. And then, I don't know how you managed to make it into the council chambers. Your hands must be so sore from clapping yourselves on the back. And Councilman Garcetti, you made a reference to how wonderful the Greeks are, how democracy came from the Greeks, how the marathon came from the Greeks. Remember also, the Trojan horse came from the Greeks, and that old saying, beware of Greeks bearing gifts. This is not a gift that the city is getting. The city will be paying for this, whereas prior to relinquishing the opportunity to appeal and change this course, the city council waived those actions, and now the bill will come due.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Rick Nightingale. After that, that's in Van Nuys. Yes, Mr. Labange, before Mr. Nightingale speaks?
Alarcon, very concerned, as all of you are. Item sixty-one is the water issue on parks. The water issue on parks, excuse me for the sound. And all of them are going to be continued, sixty-one, if it could be continued to Friday, because we're going to get a total report from the Department of Water and Power collectively, including action of their commission yesterday. So if sixty-one could be continued, an update on the water usage in parks.
Okay. Is there any objection to continuing that? If not, we'll continue that till Friday, and we'll send forty-eight forthwith. If there's no objection, forty-eight forthwith. Thank you, Mr. Nightingale, for your patience in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Yeah, good morning, Rick Nightingale. Well, after this, after you heard about the budget from Arnold Schwarzenegger, hey, they did their best. I have no idea what's going on, but there's no money, and they had to cut someplace. And everybody's been getting a free ride, I hate to say it, for the poor and so forth, but now you know what we all feel out here talking to you, that it just goes by the wayside that you just don't pay no attention to us, that the CRA is turning around getting the money, the school board turns around, they took the lottery money that they had no business taken. It was on the ballot that they couldn't take it, and they just said, "Screw you, we're going to take it anyway." And they did. So every time they get some money, they can't save it. But now you know what we feel like, sitting up here talking to you people about money, and now it hit your pocketbook, and you can't do nothing about it. You're going to sue them, but it ain't going to do no good. Same as we can sue you, it don't do no good. So how does it feel to be on the other side of the fence now? That you can't do anything about it, the same as we can't do anything about you people? You deserve every bit of it, because you can't save. Economy hit this thing. I hate to say it, I don't want to go Democrat, Republican, and so forth, but it all came down to it, that you knew the bottom was going to fall out of the market. There was, everybody said so. Just read Dick Morris's book and that stuff. He turned around and said six months before it all came down, and he read it right through the pages, and he said exactly what it was going to happen when, excuse me, when Obama took over. He drew it out like he knew, he was a, he just knew what was going on. So you deserve every bit of it, and now you know what we feel like when the situation is on the other foot. Maybe, I know you won't listen to us anymore, it don't matter, but you deserve it. Thank you.
Walter Bechtel is our next speaker for general comment.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say something more about the contracts and things I was trying to tell you about with the entertainment industry. I heard you guys on the radio, especially Mr. Garcetti, talk about how we're having problems with the entertainment people leaving the state of California. Possibly, if you would prosecute the people I told you about, they wouldn't be able to leave the state of California. I mean, when you're under prosecution, you're not supposed to leave except for Mr. Polansky, but I don't think they're all going to be Mr. Polansky's. You know, some things are, maybe it's just too obvious, like the Beztec plastic bag thing I told you about. I mean, because Dohany's relative was the C.E.O. of Beztec back in nineteen seventy-seven, I think it was, and they make plastic bags. Since then, it can disintegrate. And I don't see any reason why you can't have all the plastic bags disintegratable, but you just kind of ignored what I said and moved on. Why don't you do, like, charge money for bags that don't disintegrate, and the rest of the bags have to be mandatorily disintegratable? But Mr. Bechtel said it, I guess, so we're just going to have to pretend like nothing happened. And I think, you know, I do remember the governor and even the president saying that if somebody got a good idea about something, they can come and say something about it. Even if, I don't think he said, or they said, except for if it's Mr. Bechtel or somebody else. So, I mean, you can find out for yourself if you want to, but I think a good idea is a good idea. Doesn't matter who says it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bechtel. That will close our general public comment on items that are not on today's agenda. If we can take up our commissioners, next, please. And we'll start with number fourteen. Mr. Cervantes, if you'd like to come forward and come to the table. And this went through the Arts Parks, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Want to thank you for your service, Mr. Cervantes, and if you'd like to address the council about your nomination, we thank you, and please, if you'd like to address the public and us right now, it'd be appropriate.
Thank you very much. Good morning to you all. It's been my honor to serve the city. I'm very honored to be asked to return as a commissioner. I'll be very brief. I'm a fifth grade teacher. I teach in the city of San Fernando. I grew up in the San Fernando Valley. I'm also a professor of history at Glendo Community College, and I'm vice president of the commission right now, and serving as the chair of the Education and History Committee. I'm the only historian on the El Pueblo Commission, so I feel that what I'm contributing as a teacher, as an educator, is valuable, and I'm glad to serve the city.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for that service. I'd like to recognize Mr. Weezer, who, whose district contains El Pueblo.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Cervantes, for your contributions to El Pueblo, the birthplace of the city of Los Angeles. And we have undertaken, as you are aware, a number of projects to continue to make that a destination point, not only for Angelenos who want to know about our history, but also tourists from all over the world who come here. One of the hot items, so to speak, at El Pueblo, and it's not a recent item, it's one that's been with El Pueblo for decades, are the leases. And there's been a lot of discussion as to whether our current merchants, who attract a lot of the tourism to the area, are paying market-rate leases, and should they? The Controller recently came out with an audit that identified the need to increase what we charge our merchants. It identified how our, how the city is managing the property, that there are spaces there that can be used to realize more revenue, that we don't keep good accounting of nonprofits who use space at that location. These are not new issues. They're issues that have been around for some time. And then again, they're issues that have been addressed by our current general manager, commissioners like you and others that have been working on this over and over. Going back to the leases, which is the biggest item in the audit, we in the Budget and Finance Committee directed our general manager to come up with new leases by the end of this year. We asked him to come back in September to give an update on the progress of getting leases for the over sixty merchants that are working on a month-to-month leases now, and with a goal of having finalized leases by December. And the overall goal is to make El Pueblo self-sufficient financially, beginning the budget year ten, eleven, considering that it currently takes money from our general fund right now, when in fact, it could be possibly contributing to our general fund. So I wanted just to lay it out for the public, and also to get a sense from you, your thoughts on the audit, and your thoughts on the progress of the leases, and if you think that we will have finalized leases by the end of December. Please hold my time.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, I'm in full agreement with the findings of the audit. I think it was no surprise to you or to us what the audit said. We have been working on that. I know, I've been there for about four years, and leases have been talked about, discussed. And we've, President Asie Wenzel and I have been working hard with City Hall, with your office, to try to really make this happen this time. I do believe that the leases should go up. I'm not sure yet to what extent they should go up. I want to be sensitive to the historic nature of El Pueblo and to the merchants, but I do believe that, as you said, that we could definitely be earning a lot more income, especially if we start to RFP out those buildings, if we really start to use the space that we have in a more creative way. My committee had a meeting about two weeks ago, in the Education Outreach History Committee, to come up with ideas of how we can bring some revenue, think out of the box, have events that will bring more Angelenos to El Pueblo, that events like, I don't know if any of you have been to the Renaissance Fair? But it's basically where everyone kind of dresses up, and in this space, everyone is like in the Renaissance Europe. I would love for something like that to happen in L.A., possibly right before the city's birthday, where all of El Pueblo would become basically L.A. in whatever time period you want to pick, nineteen thirties, turn of the century. Everyone is dressed up, the merchants, we hire actors, the whole place lights up. It will become a major destination for people. So ideas like that, that we can raise revenue and be creative as well as respect our traditional events.
Great. Thank you. I'm happy to hear that you also agree that we should move forward to finalize those leases, and it's great to see that the commission is on the same page, the general manager is on the same page, the city council is certainly on the same page, and the merchants are on the same page. It's the time to do it, and this is an issue that hasn't been resolved, and it's been attempted to be resolved for over a decade, so I think this is the time to do it, and I'm glad we're in that direction. Finally, my last comment is this. We are rehabilitating the Sequeiro's mural, which is one of its kind in the world, and we have here in our backyard that hasn't had its proper attention. Underneath that, we have the Italian Hall, that I was able to allocate some funding to rehabilitate that hall. Thank you, Mr. Labange. And one of the things I've been told is that we're first going to do the Sequeiro's mural, and then the Italian Hall. I'm trying to get our Bureau of Engineering to do them simultaneously, and it will not only save us time, but hopefully money. So if you could keep that in mind as we move forward, because I've been told that you've got to do them sequentially, I'm saying we should do them simultaneously, because it's been way too long that that— been way too long that that Italian House just been sitting there empty. And as you know, we celebrate at El Pueblo not only the Mexican, Spanish, Native American cultures that were some of the most prominent here at the time when we founded the city of Los Angeles, but we also celebrate a number of other cultures, Italian, Chinese, African-Americans, Filipinos. It was a diverse group of people who really founded the city, and we need to keep those other elements alive and well at El Pueblo. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. We have Mr. Labanche, and then Mr. Zine, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith, Mr. Cardenas.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cervantes. Thank you for your service, your continual service there. This is a great nominee by Mayor Fierro Goza, born and raised in the San Fernando Valley, went to Silmar High, a teacher now at Morningside Elementary School, and also a history professor part-time at Glendale Community College. I think that passion is so important. Just explain, as you did in committee, what drives you in this sense of history, because our history is so important, and this, as Mr. Weezer said, is such an important spot.
On the first day of class in my college class, I give the students this quote. "The only persons who change history are those who change the way that people think about themselves." The only persons who change history are those who change the way that people think about themselves. And I think as historians, as a city councilperson, as a commissioner, our big responsibility is to change the way that people think about themselves, to bring history, to make history live, to use these spaces that we have in a way that people don't just pass through them every day and ignore them, but that they really feel a passion. And I'm very concerned that my generation is not seeing El Pueblo the way that my parents, for example, saw El Pueblo. That we have this, as Councilman Weezer said, this multicultural space to really highlight how Los Angeles has always been a center for multiculturalism, for diversity, for, it started that way. If you look at our plaque that we have there, I mean, you have every culture represented there, our history there is so diverse, it could be a space where we can discuss these issues of diversity, and we don't do enough of that, and that's one of the things that in my next years I would like to work on.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate your dedication and your passion for that, and also on the business of the Pueblo Monument, to get the rents right, to move forward with that, to do the mural, which is so important. I know Commissioner Nodel is going to be up here in a moment. He worked on that when he was the head of the Department of Cultural Affairs, and also the Italian Hall, which is so important. They're all anxious. Thank you, Mr. President. I recommend an I vote strongly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labanche. Mr. Zine.
In 30 seconds. It's a historical venue, as we all know. I sit on audits with Councilman Weezer. We're trying to make sure that the revenue generated pays for the maintenance, et cetera. I know the general manager is aware of what the audit revealed. So you've got a mission ahead of you, and we're going to maintain the mission of making it cost-efficient and a historical monument for the people of Los Angeles, the birthplace of L.A. So congratulations, and with your experience in teaching, maybe you can teach the vendors how they need to come up to pay the reasonable rate, so we can maintain that historical monument. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to say thank you for your service in all your capacities as a teacher and professor in junior college, and now in this role. In the past 30 years, we've had different efforts come from different interest groups that had this vision of a major developer, a major commercial entity that deals with a fast food or a major restaurant chain that can become a major resource, but to define the place, in my mind at times, questioned whether we were sticking with the historic integrity of the location. As a commissioner, and knowing that we're going through trying times, knowing that the economy isn't what it used to be, and we're going to get these economic pressures, how would you react to a proposal like that? That someone were to come forward and propose a major chain or a commercial entity to infuse capital, but also dictate how it should look as a return for this investment? How would you posture yourself in that type of scenario?
That's a hard issue. You guys are asking some hard questions today. No, I guess I would answer it in this way, that I am, I'm very leery about like big chains, like having a Starbucks at El Pueblo or something like that. No offense to Starbucks, but I think that we can be more creative with the kinds of businesses that we have, and the general manager is right on in the kinds of things, like for example, you know, things like a tequila shop, things like, we have a coffee shop opening up right there on the Plaza. Just different kinds of puestos, of merchants, that will attract different kinds of people. So I guess I would be somewhat leery of bringing in like a McDonald's at El Pueblo or something like that, but I would be open to different kinds of businesses, not just selling, you know, tacos and other things, but stuff that my generation would come there for, like tequila tastings, or for like a cigar shop or something like that, things that might be of that nature as well.
I appreciate the response. And again, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I do know that there are folks out there who have made different runs at this facility, and in the process, I've always felt it would compromise its historic fabric and take away what makes it unique. So I appreciate the response, and I look forward to working with you. And just as one last point, the main construction that you see now is county land. They have quite a bit of control of land right across the street. Do you see yourself communicating with the county personnel, with the supervisor's office, and trying to create a greater impact, understanding the benefit of having this cooperative environment? Or is there a dialogue to begin with?
Yes, we've actually been invited, and several of the commission members, as well as staff, has attended meetings with the county and in their development. And they've been very open to having, to, you know, creating that space as a space that we share. So I've been in several meetings with them, discussing, both as a commissioner, as a teacher, how we can connect El Pueblo and what's going on with, you know, their project and what they're thinking, and so we're definitely in discussion with each other.
Maybe by the end of this experience, you become a political science teacher as well. So congratulations, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
And thank you, I'm enjoying with my fellow councilmembers, congratulating you on your nomination, and thank you for your service. It was interesting, and Mr. Weezer mentioned that during the budget this year, the council in the 14th district actually proposed looking at the rents. That was a very bold move on his part, and it wasn't unnoticed, even though it was 11:00 at night, I think that you proposed that. What I'm interested in is, the Controller just did an audit with a lot of recommendations, obviously. You mentioned that, you alluded to that, but we've just received a letter from the merchants with their viewpoint of the audit, and recommending some other ideas as well. Have you seen that letter from the merchants?
Actually, I got an email that had the response, but I wasn't able to open it. I was trying to open that yesterday, as a matter of fact, so I have not seen the response yet.
I'd like to get that to you. I think the commissioner should take a look at that memo, report back to the general manager and the city, as well as to their ideas. They may have some good ideas in there, how we can soften the blow on their impending increase in rents by doing some efficiencies as well that could contribute to keeping those rents low. As I look down, and I've been eating there, as you can tell, for 30 years or so, maybe 40 years, and I enjoy going over there very much, but those are people living in their little tiny rural there, it's very small there, you know, a few square feet their operation, their businesses, and their livelihood is derived from that. And I don't want to squash that by raising rents too high, so I want to look at any efficiencies we can to make it run more efficiently and produce the same product. And I love the ideas you've had, about creative ideas, about other ways about creating interest and ideas, and how to get people there, keep it alive and vibrant as the birthplace of the city of L.A. And so I thank you for your service. I hope you'll take a look at that and make recommendations to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
I'm hoping that you do finally get those leases in proper order. They haven't been handled for a long time. As a commissioner myself, in El Pueblo about 15 years ago or so, we failed to get it done. It hasn't been able to, been achieved since then, from my understanding. So I'm not going to blame you, because I know how, that is probably the most impossible task in all the town of Los Angeles, which is really silly, because it's not that big a deal. If you just look at it for what it is, Alvera Street is utilized as a business. The argument that people make all too often is, yeah, but my grandfather's 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 grandfather used to have this spot, and so I should have my grandfather's 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 rate, which I don't even understand how that holds any water, but it seems to confuse the situation enough to where the leases don't get done. So hopefully you'll be able to do that. Also, could you answer this question for me? I may be wrong, but it's my understanding that Alvera Street is the most foot-trafficed place in the city of Los Angeles?
That, I don't, I can't confirm that. I know that we get about, what, 2 million visitors?
Yeah, and I say foot-trafficed, because, you know, there might be a combination of foot-traffic and other kinds of traffic, but it's my understanding, let's just put it this way. I'm sure Alvera Street is one of the top three foot-trafficed places in the city of Los Angeles. I'm sure of that. My point, and then when it comes to city-owned, it's probably the number one. So my point to all of you is this. That point alone should require us not only as a fiduciary responsibility, but a legal responsibility to bring those rents in order. Because I think we're getting dangerously close to having a gift of public funds, and I'm saying it purposefully on the record. If anything should motivate us, the policy body, you, the board, and the people who manage the place, to get those rents in order, it is our fiduciary responsibility and our legal responsibility. Some of those rents are ridiculously low, they're ridiculously old, and for some reason, people are able to convolute the argument with some heritage arguments that I don't even see them in the language of the leases, but somehow that makes it into the entire dialogue, and then it just gets put over, and put over, and put over. So for the sake of the street, Alvera Street, and for the sake of the city, we need to make sure that they come in line with where they should be, and that will allow the city to have more money for maintenance and other matters, so we can get the Italian Hall done, so we can get the Securios mural done. That was, by the way, those are the things that we were working on when I was on the board 15 years ago. So just some examples of how difficult it is and how I understand it, but let's get those leases in order, and let's start ignoring those ridiculous arguments that have no legal basis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no other speakers on the queue. Go ahead and consider the nomination. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations. Unanimous vote, Mr. Cervantes.
Thank you all.
Thank you again for your service. We've had a request to take 38 out of order. If we could ask Mr. Nodel to come forward? And I'd like to recognize our chair of our Arts Parks Committee, Mr. Labanche again.
President, thank you very much. Al Nodel is one of the greatest of all leaders of the arts community in the United States. We were so pleased to have him be our general manager for many years, many are familiar with him. He also is now on the commission, and he's a tremendous individual. I want to please welcome his wife, Tammy. Give Tammy a big hand right there, baby. Good to see you. And Al, tell us your work, what you can continue. Strong I vote for Al Nodel.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to serve the city again. I was GM of Cultural Affairs for 12 years in the 90s, and now I'm president of the commission. We've been putting a lot of work on the commission level. First of all, let me just tell you that I think that the Cultural Affairs Department is really important to the city for many reasons, but one of the most important reasons is because it's one of the places where people can get cultural services at the street level, where kids can get classes, art classes, where we can provide a culture at a price that people can afford in L.A. Culture is becoming more and more elite in this town, and having a department like Cultural Affairs really helps neighborhoods, people in neighborhoods access culture. As on the commission, I've been working in the last two years on revamping the design review process for the city. We've finally done that. We're going to have a much more efficient way of reviewing design, so all of the projects that you send to us get reviewed, and we get the best possible architecture in the city. Now, I'm going to be putting my focus, and with Commissioner Richard Montoya, on the murals of L.A. Councilmember Weezer talked about the Securios mural, and the Securios mural is coming up, and it's wonderful that it's happening. But we have to look at the rest of the murals in this city. If we're going to fix that Securios mural, we have to take a look at everything else that's happening all over the city. We've come up with a real plan to have a citywide conversation about what murals mean in L.A., and what we can do to keep murals vital in our city. So that's really what I'm going to be focused on in the next year, to try to address that issue. So when we get that Securios mural finished, we're going to have everything else that represents the Securios mural, because that is the symbol of muralism in the city, and we have something just as important, other neighborhood murals in our town. So that's what I'm going to be focused on, and I look forward to coming back to the city council and talking about this issue, because it's a very important issue for the city. It's important for the neighborhoods. Other than that, I just wanted to say that I care about culture, and I'll do everything that I can as a commissioner to do my best to keep it vital in the city.
Mr. Weezer.
Well, thank you, and, you know, my questions were going to be, was going to be on murals. I think not only on murals, but a number of other issues. You've been proactive as a commissioner, and I certainly appreciate that. When you see something happening in council or one of our committees, you make that phone call, and you're offering advice, and your expertise, I really appreciate that. Particularly with murals, you know, I've been active in focusing on some of the murals in my district. East L.A. was once known as, probably the city of L.A. for that matter, was once known as the mural capital of the world. We've had more murals in public spaces than any other part of the world, and unfortunately, we haven't done our job of maintaining them and preserving them as much as we should. And particularly in our neighborhoods, where once our gang members respected some of the religious icons or religious murals that we had in our communities, and our local markets and other places would put them up, because they thought that our local gang members would respect those, they're now being defaced, just like any other mural. But we really appreciate your work on that. I would want to continue working with you on how we could preserve more of our murals. When you ask young boys and girls in our city what those murals mean to them, they get a sense of place, they get a sense of who they are, who they are in their community, who they are as Angelenos. I know certainly for me, when I spent my summers in Estrada Courts, where every wall had a mural, it gave me a sense of my history, and to be proud of my history, and to be proud of my community. And I know a lot of youngsters feel that when they walk in our communities, but it's not a good sight to see when the paint is peeling, when there's graffiti on them. And your expertise and knowledge on this is going to be very, very valuable. I think if there's anybody in the city who could contribute to this, and be the leader on this, is yourself. So we appreciate your work, and I look forward to continue working with you. And we know that a big piece of this is going to be funding, and so we've got to be creative in these very tough financial times about how we could get the necessary funding to preserve these beautiful murals that are now going to be lost in history. So thank you so much for your service.
Thank you very much, and we've got quite a few creative ideas on how to do that, and I'd be happy to come talk to you about that as well.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, I wanted to just share with my colleagues that back in the early 90s, it was Mr. Nodel who was one of the anchors around McCarthy Park in trying to resew and reestablish the social fabric through the arts, through cultural events. So I want to thank you for your contribution to the city. I'm not sure if people understand the significance of your role in those days. And just recently, five years ago, we discussed the possibility of the Allen Brick Foundation and their associates working in the cornfield area. For the past five years, he's engaged that resource by creating Farm Lab under the Spring Street Bridge, which is right at the base of the river, right next to the cornfield, and creating a whole new environment about understanding and educating people on environmentalism, water issues, on and on and on. So thank you, Mr. Nodel, for all your hard work. My question to you really is, in these waning times of corporate losses, private sectors retrenching, how do you see your role as a commissioner in addressing this resource need? Is there something that we can look to that can allow us to stimulate these arts programs you speak of, murals being one? There's a whole range of cultural activities that we need to encourage. Can you speak to that?
Sure. Well, you know, there were the economic issues that are... Well, you know, with the economic issues that are in the city, it's really affected the commercial art market in many ways, but, you know, there's never been a lack of need for culture as a creative tool in the city to address many of the things that happen in the city every day. I mean, culture, as far as I'm concerned, is a tool, not only for beauty, of course for beauty and for inspiring us all, but also for addressing specific issues that communities have in a city like economic development, tourism, all of the things that culture can do. So, I mean, I don't see culture as having a lesser role in the city because of the economic downturn. In fact, I think it's much more important, and I think we can do a lot with, the great thing about artists and people working in culture is they're very creative. They make a very little amount of money go a long way. So, you know, one of the things that you won't see at our department is a lot of waste. We use every money, every little dollar, every big dollar that we get, and use it well for addressing the needs of the communities. I think we can do a lot creatively to find more money for the arts in this city. I know that the department is working on a new cultural master plan, and I haven't really been part of that, because I've been focusing on the design review issues, but when that comes out, I think we're going to be able to, and in the mural areas, one area where I'm going to be looking for ways of involving people who haven't been involved in culture in a way, in a new way, to supporting murals in their communities. So I think there's a lot of creative ways that we can find money for the arts in this town.
Great, and as the art fees continue to stay with every new development, knowing that it's rather dormant these days, that's a policy we need to visit.
Right.
Because perhaps, at least I've seen in my district where large contributions are made to the art fund, through the art fee, yet we don't, what's not reciprocated is the amount coming back, and there is a greatest need, so that's a discussion we'll have in the future.
Well, that's a very important issue, and I'm glad you brought that up. I think we really need to do, and not the whole arts development fee process. And this is something that I called on when I was the General Manager of Cultural Affairs. We need to find where the arts development dollars are going, because a lot of them aren't even going to the department anymore. So I think we need to really look at that and see how, you know, how that can be refocused to really provide services to Angelinos. And we welcome that. Look forward to working with you on that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Hahn. Janice.
Thank you, Mr. President. Al, it's great to see you here, and thank you for agreeing to continue to serve. A lot of issues for me with Cultural Affairs Department. As you said, it's such an important department, I think we all realize that. It's really about getting art and cultural opportunities right to the people that we serve. Let me just bring up two issues, and you can tell me how, what you know about them and how we can move forward. First is the Watts Towers, which I think is one of L.A.'s greatest treasures. Recently, there was an article in the L.A. Times about how the Watts Towers were in disrepair, and I do remember previously us partnering with the Getty to look at going forward and trying to pool our resources in maintaining the Watts Towers. We had a big press comment down there a few years back that said they were structurally sound, and yet we're now getting reports, oh, look, there it is, and yet now we're getting reports that they're in need of repair, that they are falling apart. So are you aware of this current condition of the Watts Towers, but more importantly, what are we doing to maintain these towers? Or if they need serious repair, do we have the resources to do that? Hold my time, please.
Let me just say, in the larger view, the Watts Towers is an artwork, and it's the kind of thing that constantly needs to be repaired.
Right.
It's never going to be fixed forever. I mean, it's really a working process, and we need to continue to be very vigilant of it, focus attention on it. We just had a joint Commission meeting with the Historic Preservation Commission and Cultural Affairs, where we came together to look at this issue and decided to work together on it. So both Commissions are now working together on one particular issue, which I think is a very good step in the right direction. It's just, we just have to be vigilant about the Watts Towers, we have to continue to provide funding to it.
Do we have, do we have those resources?
We don't have the resources right now, but we need to find them.
Then how are we going to do it?
But we need to find them. We need to, I think the Watts Towers is another example of a feature of the city where we can go out there and try to find private dollars for. It is part of the background of L.A., and we need to be very creative in terms of finding private dollars to make it happen, because it's going to be an ongoing process and an ongoing problem.
Good, so I can count on you to be the leader in that, in terms of getting resources, because it would be a real shame if we let the Watts Towers go into disrepair. It is a huge draw.
It is.
Not only locally, but certainly tourism. People come to the city to Watts, specifically see the Watts Towers, and we've done so much with the Art Center there. We now have the Charles Mingus Youth Art Center that we've opened, so, but it would be very sad if the icon of that whole cultural crescent, which is the Watts Towers, in some way fell into disrepair, and as you know, the longer it's in disrepair, the more money it's going to take, too. So I'm going to count on you.
You can count on me, and you can count on the rest of the Commission to focus on this issue and move it forward.
Thank you. The other issue for me, as you probably are well aware, is the Warner Grand Theater. Warner Grand is a remarkable historic structure in San Pedro. The downtown business association, the Chamber, considers the Warner Grand kind of one of the anchors in our whole redevelopment of downtown. I think it was a great move that the city rescued it several years back and kept it as a theater. And as you know, we have the Grand Vision Foundation, which is one of our Friends of Organizations here in the city of Los Angeles, and yet I have heard, and I'm sure you have too, a constant complaint from this Friends group that they cannot work with Cultural Affairs. Cultural Affairs is this bureaucratic organization, department, that doesn't know help when they see it. The Warner Grand Vision, the Vision Foundation has raised millions of dollars on their own to keep that theater renovated, to replace the seats, to program, help to bring programs to that theater, and yet Cultural Affairs Department seems to put on their bureaucratic blinders sometimes when they deal with that organization. And it breaks my heart, because I feel so lucky to have a group of volunteer people who are willing to raise money to support a city, structure, and facility, and yet, whether it is in terms of trying to get approvals for things, or get checks that they know is owed to them, it has been, it gets up to my level where I have to bring in the Head of Cultural Affairs and Lee Schindler to try to broker an agreement. What can you do, as we move forward, to at least make the department understand how valuable it is when we have volunteers in this city who love our facilities as much as we do, or maybe more? What can you do to sort of smooth the relationship, and more importantly, you know, keep the work going of the Friends?
Well, the Warner Grand Theater, as you know, Janice brought me to San Pedro for the first time, the first time I ever went to San Pedro. I went to see the Warner Grand Theater, fell in love with it, worked to restore it.
I know.
And was, and live, and I now live about five blocks away from it.
I know.
So it's my theater as well, and I love it.
And you've heard this complaint?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I think this is a perfect example of a situation where we can actually have a real partnership, and it isn't just a support group. There's no reason why the Friends of the Warner Grand Theater can't program that theater. The department doesn't have enough people on staff to be able to do a good job at it. So I would be very supportive of looking at that theater, seeing if we can give the Friends of the Warner Grand a larger role in managing the theater. I mean, it doesn't have to be us, and many of our other facilities can be done that way as well. I mean, we need to use the help that we got coming down the pike, and they may put it to work. So I would be willing to start a process today with the Friends of the Warner Grand Theater and with the staff of Cultural Affairs, to see what we can do to give them a bigger role in managing that theater. They renovated it.
I know.
But we stopped, they continued working on it.
I know.
They did all the seats.
And I'm sure they'd be more than willing to partner, but I imagine their biggest, you know, concern or objection would be this seemingly inability to work with the department.
Well, they can work with me.
Okay.
And I'm easy to work with, and I'd be happy to.
Okay, well, I'm going to count on you to lead that charge.
You got it.
And I want to help you do that. I think it's a fabulous idea. I know my time's up, but a lot of other complaints have been with, many of our facilities are open in the evenings and the weekends, and yet Cultural Affairs staff works nine to five.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Has the Commission taken up the idea of looking at refiguring the staffing hours at some of our facilities so that they can be there at night when the facilities are open?
Well, especially during the summer, it'd be a really good thing to do. We haven't done that, but we will do that.
Okay.
We don't manage the department, you know, we're advisory to the department, but we'd be happy to talk to you.
Well, you have a lot to say. You have a lot to say. I would like for your Commission to take that up.
We will.
Mr. Alacon is our next.
I'll get back to you about that.
Okay.
Mr. Alacon.
Yeah. The Northeast San Fernando Valley is now strapped with fifty-eight thousand square-foot structure that was intended to be a children's museum, and a citywide museum, in fact, a regional museum. But now we're going to be strapped with, trying to figure out what it's going to be. And I was wondering, you said you were going to raise money from the private industry to help all these other projects. I was wondering if Cultural Affairs might have some vision and help and support for the Children's Museum, which could be the largest blight ever built by the city of Los Angeles, in partnership with the Children's Museum folks. Is there any way that the Cultural Affairs Department and Commission can help?
I'd be happy to go and take a look at it, see what I could come up with in terms of ideas. You know, there's a great need for cultural facilities in this town, and I know that the site with the Children's Museum is very needy in terms of cultural programs, and I'd be happy to go and look and see what I can come up with.
Actually, I'd like to sit down and talk to you.
That would be wonderful.
Some of the ideas that have emerged, but.
Sure. I mean, I've been thinking about.
It's going to need a lot of financial support as well, and it has to be consistent with the mandates of the funding sources that.
That built the building.
That built the building, so we have some work to do.
Be happy to do it. I mean, there's a great need in this town right now for a center for culture and sustainability, a center where culture and environment can come together at a civic level.
Excellent.
That might be something that we can do there. I mean, there seems to be lots of support for it.
That's part of the mandate.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you for offering of your free time. I know it's valuable time, but it's free to us, so thank you very much once again. I just have a quick question in the interest of time, about how many millions of dollars could we or should we invest if we had all the money in the world when it comes to cultural issues, programs, et cetera, for all the children and families of Los Angeles? Round it off to the nearest ten million, if you could.
Oh, wow, that's a hard question. I mean, the department is very, very underfunded, as you know.
Yeah.
I would say another, if we could get a shot in the arm of another ten million dollars a year.
Another ten million dollars a year.
Focused on youth programs for the city, I think we can fix a lot of the ills, cultural ills, at the neighborhood level.
Do you think a hundred million would be too much, or do you think we could figure out a way to use it properly?
We can use it.
Efficiently and appropriately?
We can use it.
Yeah, I agree with that. I just want to let you know, coming down the pike is a motion. As we're looking at our billboard ordinance for the city of Los Angeles, I put in a motion to extract a fee specifically so that we could have arts and cultural activities for the city of Los Angeles, which should be a win-win for everybody. I'm sure the people who want to advertise, they would much rather advertise in a city that has a lot better balance than a city that looks much better when you have the kids, instead of writing on walls, they're writing in classrooms and in parks and libraries and places like that, where they can actually express themselves, instead of being bored and then find themselves doing something as dumb as writing on somebody's wall.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
So just get ready for that. Thank you.
The, our thinking about the mural issue in the city, and tie it to companies, industries like the billboard industry, like the private security industry in L.A., all of these industries that have a real role at the neighborhood, at the sidewalk level in L.A., you know?
Sure.
They have a role there, and they can help, and we can get some money out of the billboard companies to help restore murals and provide opportunities for kids that are tagging murals. I mean, that'd be a win-win for everybody, so.
Wonderful, I agree.
Very supportive of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Close.
Thank you very much, Al. The last request, I think it's collective, we want to keep the gallery open on the bridge. Your department cut it out of their budget, we want to get the gallery, come back to us, tell us what it is, because you help bring art to City Hall, we don't want to lose that. This is one of the greatest people that I've ever met. I met Al when he first came to Los Angeles. I like what Mr. Reyes said about what Al did at MacArthur Park, he started the seed, which you've elevated even higher, Ed. So you're truly an angel, and a seed of angels, Al Nadel, and a great guy, and I love you. I recommend an eye vote.
So you're saying yes?
For sure. Just to clarify, Mr. Labonge, you like the guy? Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Mr. Nadel, for all your service and for your continuing service. We very much appreciate it.
We'll now take a vote on the reappointment. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations, and thank you very much. We'll now take up items fifteen and sixteen. Justice Arabian, if you'd like to come forward, and Ms. Sella, if you'd like to join the table. I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Housing Community and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. These two individuals were in committee today. I'm sorry you missed it. We had a very interesting and informative exchange. They have been here since eight o'clock in the morning, and I would make a request of our colleagues that we would move this expeditiously so that they could go and take care of their business. We had a very extensive committee hearing today where they were questioned by members. I without a doubt know that they're going to be great Commissioners, and I just can't believe we've gotten two people, one of which was recommended by our Council President, Ms. Sella, and Justice Arabian. I think they're going to make a great team, plus he was a PIP. If anybody has an opportunity to sit down and have a cup of coffee with him, I'm sure that he, it would be a very delightful exchange. I request a unanimous vote and ask my colleagues if we could move this with some haste, because they've been here all day.
All right, we do have three people on the queue, would they like to speak?
I try.
All right, Mr. Smith has very positive things to say about you for the record. Mr. Zine, is he passing, too?
I just want to second Mr. Wesson's motion.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes.
It must've been a long day, but there is a question I need to ask.
Please.
And that is, and I said this in committee, but I think it's important, in understanding how we bring in this notion of greening compatible jobs. We have this clash where folks are saying, "You're taking away industrial land, we need businesses, we need jobs." At the same time, I'm asserting, we can use wetlands, open space, greening practices that can be complementary to industrial businesses, and looking at the specific plan that we are establishing in the Cornfield Royal Cycle area, we're creating jobs through the River Keepers. So these are youngsters that are actually getting jobs along the river corridor, but to be able to expand that and associate and have a nexus with upcoming jobs is an objective I would like to achieve. I just want to get feedback from you as to how we could attain that, and looking at your role in the IDA, how could we promote this?
Thank you, Councilmember Reyes. I very much appreciate your emphasis on that, because I think it's consistent with a shared vision for the future of our city, where we're not just looking for any job to be created through the IDA, but sustainable jobs, living wage jobs, and jobs whose purpose is complementary to communities and is really part of the fabric of communities, rather than at odds with our communities. So your emphasis this morning tells me, and I know Justice Arabian as well, that that's a priority for the city, and we'll very much have that in our minds as we go forward. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Justice Arabian, is that got any?
I join with those comments. The saddest thing that I see in the mornings as I drive to my office is the corners and Van Nuys, where all these young men are sitting there waiting for somebody to stop their car and give them something to do. There are lots of somethings to do, we've just got to hook up the people on the corner with the people who stop on the corner on a more regular basis. That's one of the saddest things that we see here.
Thank you both very much. With that, we'll go ahead and prepare the roll on these eight nominations and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you both for your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Appreciate your patience. Mr. Labonge?
I'd like to introduce some guests from China who are here this morning, and the second row, please rise. They're on an educational exchange with Cal State L.A., young, dedicated municipal executives to learn about Los Angeles and California government. Thank you.
Xie xie, Mr. Labonge. Ni hao ma. It's great to have you here. Thank you as well. We will take up our next Commissioner, please, number seventeen, Ms. Townsend, if you'd like to come forward. Is she out there? Janice, could we get Camilla? Come on forward. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes for his appointment to the Harbor APC. Mr. Reyes?
Yes, good morning. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for your patience. It's been a long morning. This is a reappointment to the Harbor Planning Commission, so I know there's a lot of great things that are happening in the Harbor, the stewardship of Councilman Han. So, I'd just like to ask you, it's a reappointment, so you know what you're getting yourself into. So, in terms of observations, any pearls of wisdom or thoughts that you would like to have as you're leaving at the end of this experience, what you would like to see? Like to share that with us? That'd be great for my colleagues to hear.
Thank you, Councilmembers. I've served on four Commissions for the City of Los Angeles over the last ten to twelve years, so I've had experience on citywide commissions as well as area commissions, and the roles are often quite different. I served on the Youth, Family, and Children Commission, the Joint Commission on Educational Government between the City Council and the L.A. Unified School District, the Harbor Commission, and now the Harbor Area Planning Commission. And I think if there's one lesson to be learned, or one benefit, is that this is the city's opportunity to relate to the stakeholders, whether they be big, huge corporate entities or agencies, down to individuals who are trying to actually really do something in their communities and are often intimidated by the large bureaucracy of the City of Los Angeles, often feel they have no voice, and this is the way we can give them that voice. And it's an honor for me to have the opportunity to have been for so many years a facilitator of that communication for the City of Los Angeles.
Well, I just wanna say on behalf of the citizenry of Los Angeles, thank you very much for all of your work throughout these different commissions, and I encourage an eye vote. I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Han is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, we are always grateful, Camilla, that you choose to say yes whenever you are asked to serve on a Commission in the City of Los Angeles. It's, again, it's our interesting form of government in Los Angeles that we have these citizens who sit on these commissions and oversee very important decisions that really, you know, map out the future of how the city looks and acts and behaves, and so we really appreciate that. You know, I think all of your commissions, particularly the Harbor Commission and maybe this Commission, there is a delicate balance between, you know, the economic engines of the area, economic development of the area, and balancing that with quality of life issues for neighborhoods. And maybe you can just speak to a little bit, how do you think the Harbor Area Planning Commission has done, can do, in the future, really balancing those sometimes competing needs? And I think now it is all about jobs, 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 economic development, and it's all about land use. But sometimes that, again, conflicts with people's perception of what their neighborhood should be or look like. How do you, how do you all navigate that?
Well, it's a challenge because it's very true, and I found it to be true on any Commission. I served on in different forms. But the quality of life issues should always be at the forefront of our thinking because that's what it's ultimately all about. I think a lot of our challenge is to educate the community and the stakeholders as to how this all works and how it all connects. I mean, you need to have a holistic approach. The economics of it, the environmental issues, the social issues, all come together, and one doesn't work without the other. And I think it's very important for commissioners to themselves be well-educated, but also, being a former teacher, I'm always big on education, and that I think a lot of the problems we have with stakeholders is they don't really understand what's happening. They don't see the big picture. They don't understand the relationships. So, I think it's important that we make opportunities for people to be educated and understand these issues, especially when they come to Commission meetings. And that's one of the things I try to do, is go back and explain how the Community Redevelopment Agency works, or how city ordinances work, and that it's not just a matter of, there are, you know, processes and procedures that we have to work with. We can't reinvent the whole city to make something happen the way they want it to happen. That's always a big challenge, too. So, you wanna find ways to make things happen that are the best for everybody within the structure we're given to work, which is the City of Los Angeles bureaucracy. So, I, so it is a challenge, and I think it's important that we always show how whatever decisions we make impact quality of life, economics, which is obviously extremely important right now, and social and environmental issues.
You know, we've had discussions over the years about the role of the area planning commissions, and we know primarily they're there to hear appeals, but we've talked about some of the other issues that you can, under our current system, actually take up or hear. Are there certain issues that you would like to see your planning commission deal with or hear besides just appeals?
Well, this is a, this is a recommendation I have, and it's an issue I have with City Planning Department and with the planning commission process or the area planning commissions, is that we only meet when there are hearings for appeals. When I came on the Commission very naive three years ago, I thought, "Oh, no, we should meet when we're scheduled to meet, and if we don't have an appeal, we should be having an information item. We should have something that's gonna give the public and the stakeholders an opportunity to come to the Commission and express their feelings about land use issues and development issues and all of that." And we have literally been told that City Planning Department has no staff to have those meetings unless there's hearings. So, given the budget shortfalls and issues with the city, I understand that, but it's sort of too bad because sometimes people say, "Oh, the Harbor Area Planning Commission, that's a joke." I've been told that. You know, you don't do anything. Of course, they don't realize, 'cause they only come to the meetings because the ordinances are not, the appeals are usually not of general--
Right.
Sometimes they're of general interest, but rarely they're not.
Right.
So, I think we should be very, we should have presentations, and everything that the Harbor Department is doing with the waterfront development because it's gonna bring it to another perspective. We should also have presentations on the community plan, which I think we will have. We should also be dealing with the Arts, Culture, and Entertainment District developments, including the Warner Grand Theater and all of that for the development and land use of downtown, and the Business Improvement Districts for all of the areas of the Harbor. I'm not just talking about San Pedro. I think this could be a very valuable forum, and also, maybe there should be some decision-making at that, at that level. So, anyway, but we're being told that we can't do it because there's no staff to staff it. So, I mean, we can only go so far.
Well, and I'm glad you brought that up, and I think that's good for the Council to hear, 'cause as we're going through always tough budget times. But I think you're right. I think it makes for ultimately better planning citywide, neighborhood by neighborhood. If we have more opportunities at the local level to draw in stakeholders and educate them so that they're better equipped to deal with land use issues in the city. So, I appreciate you bringing that up, and we'll see if we can work that out. So, again, thank you for your service, and I look forward to working with you.
Well, you're always a pleasure to work with.
Thank you, Camilla.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. And that's our last speaker on the queue, and thank you for offering to serve yet again for the city, Ms. Townsend. And with that, we will take our vote. So, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations. Thank you. If we can reconsider thirty-five, please. If we can open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll and tabulate the vote. And--
Thirteen ayes.
If we can continue that till Friday for Mr. Rosendahl, without objection, we'll do that. If we can go to the next three Commissioners, item thirty-eight, and then we will-- oh, we did thirty-eight, all right. So, item thirty-nine. We have one Speaker card, Matt Dowd, in San Pedro on item number thirty-nine. Good morning.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. It's always nice to be in San Pedro, the remote location, very nice, friendly people out here. Let me talk about this Board of Animal Services Commissioners. There's been a lot of problems in that department. Let me tell technical people, there's bad sound here, too. It's not that great, but I'll push on. The, yeah, the general manager and all the complaints and, you know, you can relax, Ruth Ann. You know, my public comment's not gonna mean anything. You will be voted in on this. It's just the formality that the City Council has to go through. That's how they treat it, so I'm gonna take it. But what I want you to do is make sure we don't have these disastrous things that happen we have with Ed Barks, Animal Services. It's one of the most important departments in the city because the animals can't take care of themselves, so somebody has to, so I need you to step up.
Thank you. There are no Councilmembers who wish to be heard on this. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on the nomination and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That reappointment is reaffirmed. Next item, item forty, Mr. Dowd, if you'd like to speak on the next nomination.
Yeah, thank you. Another minute on this one, too. Once again, Mr. William O'Kill to the Police Permit Review Panel. Relax once again. My public comments never affect the outcome. If anything that happens in this city, let me tell you that for a fact. So, this is an important one, though. The Police Permit Review Panel Consent Decree just got lifted, so we're gonna have to be watching to see what happens with, you know, LAPD and the-- it's gonna be a lot of problems, I can see it now, because now they're just gonna think, "Oh, wow, now we're out of federal review. We can do whatever we want again." I'm sure it's gonna happen eventually. No one will admit it. I'm already a victim of it. The police are running rampant down at Venice with all these permits and stuff they've got. It's ridiculous.
Thank you very much, sir, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Zein first, and then Mr. Kretz. Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
You're not only a member of the Police Permit Review, but a member of a lot of other wonderful programs and activities in the City of Los Angeles. Can you go into some brief detail, some of the activities you're involved in for public service in the City of Los Angeles?
Of course. I serve on the U.S. Army Southern California Advisory, Community Advisory Board. I sit on the same board as Councilman Zein. Also, currently, I co-chair for the LAPD Olympic Division's Community Police Advisory Board, and also, I sit on a number of other education organizations, nonprofit organizations, among others, and also sit on the Korean-American Chamber of Commerce.
And you have brought the community together, the Korean community in particular, to the Police Department with the opening of the Olympic Station, and transformed that community into a very productive, positive, crime-free, with Captain Blake--
Yes, sir.
--an environment that has changed tremendously, and I think your involvement needs to be recognized publicly because of the activities that you've been involved in, not only the United States Army, that advisory board, which you've done with the Police Permit Review Panel, and the connection between the Los Angeles Police Department, the community, and what you have done as a generator of bringing folks together, and recently awarded ten thousand dollars in scholarships to the children of LAPD personnel. So, I want to acknowledge the wonderful work you've done and your participation in this Commission, this Police Permit Review, all of the ABC that comes through arcades, everything that has the quality of life comes through the Police Permit Review Panel. A lot of people don't know about it. They hear about Police Commission, but you are part of that Police Commission, and you are really involved in things that deal with quality of life in the community. When they put something in a community that disrupts the community, they go to you and the Commission to try and resolve the matter and correct it. So, I just wanna offer my congratulations. You'll be a great member of that continuing. You served with Ricky Gelb and some other great people from the community of Los Angeles, but what you have done for that Korean community to bring them together, closer together as a close-knit relationship with the Police Department and other factors. So, congratulations. And, Mr. President, it is really very loud in here right now.
We could ask our folks to keep their conversations, please, to a minimum. Mr. Kretz is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the public's information, what the Police Permit Review Panel does is it approves all police permits for a variety of different types of permit uses, fifty-three of them in fact, including massage parlors and pawn shops. And they're a subsidiary of the Police Commission. They were formed as a result of a suggestion by the Christopher Commission, so it would allow the Police Commission to focus on their policy work and take that load off of them. Mr. Kill has been with the panel for a number of years. He's been a regular attendee, a very active participant in this panel, does his due diligence, has done a terrific job, and I recommend an eye vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kretz, and my apologies. I should've called him first as the Public Safety Chair. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
First of all, thank you for your service. There's a very contentious environment right now regarding medical marijuana dispensaries, and one of the logistical processes here is, how do they get reviewed? How does the application get processed? So, we talk about liquor stores, we talk about all these other permits. Just from your point of view, and I know I'm asking a shit from the hip here, but this has put us in a place where we're working very hard to control them, to find places for them. The review process will be just as significant, the logistics of how they are monitored, the kinds of checks and balances that are, that need to be in place. In this role, can you speak to that in terms of Police Permit Review? Do you see a role for this body, given the nature of its impact and the imposition it's created in our neighborhoods? Well, first of all, I don't think our Police Permit Review Panel has been charged with duties of reviewing any applications. It has never come before us in my three years. Oh, no, it hasn't, but it's a policy we're going to develop. As a person who sits on this panel, as a policymaker, I'm asking you-- Of course. --given the direction it could take, and given the emergency, the sense of urgency we have in dealing with this rash of outlets, do you see this panel playing a role in that process? Well, if we're charged with such duties, I'm sure there's a role that we can play since LAPD Police Commission's Investigative Division does all the due diligence, all the underlying investigative research on the applicants, and we do generally respect and follow their recommendation before we make any decisions. And like any other permits, such as massage parlor or massage therapist permits, we do interview the applicants individually when they come before us, ask questions, and address any concerns that our community brings to us. So, I'm sure there's a role that we can play to make sure that the individual applicants applying for such permits are thoroughly investigated and interviewed. Well, I thank you for that, sir. I think it's important for the public to hear that we do have an individual on this panel who sees the skill set and the capacity of this particular mechanism within the city that can deal with checks and balances, with quality control, with compatibility, issues of compatibility. So, for that, I thank you for shedding some light in that ability and for your endless effort in serving the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one public speaker on this matter, Arnold Sachs. Mr. Sachs, come forward, please, number fourteen.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Arnold Sachs, congratulations on your appointment, and thank you, Councilman Kretz, for trying to explain some of the issues that this gentleman will be dealing with in the future. I've come before the City Council with a request-- I've come before the City Council with a request, there's been some discussions regarding uniforms for the film security with the Police Department, and since you, uh, investigate different kinds of permits, I've requested a, um, some, the council look into the fact that there's a business that operates at the airport, whose employees have a city seal on their uniforms, but they're not city employees, they have no connection with the city. Now, since you investigate different businesses, would you please have the opportunity, or maybe, can you take the opportunity, or will the opportunity be presented before your commission to investigate why the city continues to allow this one company, no other company in the city of LA has this kind of leeway to put a city emblem on its employees' uniforms, would you possibly have the ability to check into why they are able to impersonate the fact that they operate as a city agency when they have no connection? Thank you.
All right, thank you. This matter is now up for the vote, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Kill.
Thank you.
Confirmed. Our next item will be number sixty-four. Mr. Garcetti, it's number sixty-one.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, today is a pretty exciting day in the city of Los Angeles, we talk a lot about water here, and, um, many of your staffs have been working closely, um, Sam Siegel and my staff, who, who's last day was Friday, because he's gone to law school, uh, took the lead on this, um, a few years ago when I asked him to look at what the next phase of our water efficient plumbing fixtures could be in the city of Los Angeles. It's much often pointed out that we consume the same amount of water today in Los Angeles as we did about twenty years ago, with a million more people, and the main reason was the low flow flush toilet and, um, our water efficient fixtures. We have a whole new generation of these fixtures colleagues, that are now, uh, before us, and today we have a great ordinance that I ask for your support on, to help preserve the city's future and our water supply. Um, we have, uh, a ordinance before us that would save us one billion, that's B, billion dollars, sorry, billion gallons of water a year. We're not yet at a dollar a gallon, so, it's not a billion dollars, one billion gallons of water a year. The next phase of water efficient fixtures, that would require a new construction, high efficiency toilets, faucets, urinals, showerheads, dishwasher, dishwashers, and cooling towers, and whenever old, uh, so it's not just for new construction of buildings, but whenever old plumbing fixtures, um, run out of the life of those fixtures, because most of them have about a twenty year life, they will be replaced with these high efficiency, um, fixtures. About sixty thousand acre feet of water over the next ten years, close to one percent of our total current water consumption, just from these fixtures alone. It's especially as important, as we're in our third year of drought right now, and have begun mandating water conservation measures in outdoor arenas, the best part of this is it's actually a cheaper upfront cost, thanks to the DWP, because with the DWP offering, um, uh, more efficient fixtures assistance, that it will actually be cheaper than buying the old fixtures, plus it saves money in the consumption. And of course, the saving over the lifetimes of the plants are in the thousands of dollars. The average Angelina will save ninety dollars a year from this, about two thousand dollars in the life of each fixture. It has everything from our new toilets, um, urinals, faucets, um, showerheads, dishwashers, and our single pass cooling towers, which are now going to be prohibited. And when we look at this, um, it is also something that makes great financial sense. A waterless urinal gives you return on investment in the same year it is purchased. The same year it's purchased, it pays for itself in the reduction of water, and every year thereafter, it's change in your pocket. But at the same time, it allows us all to have water, which is a recyclable, reusable resource, and we have a number of folks, we have great unanimity from the business community, I want to thank those folks who build and manufacture these products, we want to encourage you to stay in Los Angeles and come to Los Angeles, because we're the strongest in the nation, um, ordinance, we believe this is a great place for you to do business, and we hope that you'll consider that. But we also have not only the business community unified behind this, property owners who know that this makes sense, but our environmental community of course too, Sierra Club and others, Ms. Perry and I had a press conference at the Convention Center, where we saw a hundred and ninety urinals that were converted this year, uh, that will already save us hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, we see the same in the dishwasher that they converted, we're still able to wash as many dishes, still able to have clean dishes, but we save money and save water. So I ask for unanimous support, this is one of those things we will look back on in twenty years and say we were there at that moment, and I would like to reopen public hearing for a few comments as well, I know we had a public hearing as well in committee, but I think it, it bears, um, hearing that unanimity and some of the great folks that are here, so I would move that we reopen, uh, public comment as well. Do we do public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Perry, followed by Ms. Hahn.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and, uh, yes, Mr. Garcetti mentioned that we were at the Convention Center this morning, and we were there because the Convention Center has been an extraordinary, uh, template, role model, leader, and visionary in executing and implementing projects on energy efficiency and water conservation, and, uh, they really have put us on the map in this area, but what this ordinance represents is an opportunity for us to modify our behavior in the future and create assets in buildings that will make them more appealing in, in sale and subsequent purchase, uh, so that people, when they acquire these properties or build these properties, or eventually if we get to residential, they do so with an understanding that there is already an energy efficiency, the water conservation infrastructure in the property, and they will realize the benefits of that because of the implementation of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, colleagues, we have nine cards from the public, if, uh, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Reyes, if we can take those, and then we'll hear from, uh, the council members? Ms. Hahn?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Reyes, our first speaker is Ken Borquist, one minute, followed by April Trafton, that'll be our next speaker.
Hi, my name is Ken Borquist, I'm the Manufacturers' Rep for Zern Industries, and the project you were just speaking, it was the LA Convention Center, we provided the products on that particular project, uh, the highlight of that was our one pint urinal system, it uses only one pint of water, doesn't require any secondary cartridges or any other type of apparatus, once it's in place, it's got significant savings. I'm here to support the measure, uh, we've also done projects at Cal State LA, UCLA, and USC, the technology's there, it's in place, and I commend the Board and the DWP for their efforts in making this happen, it's the right thing, and we're ready for it. Thank you.
Thank you, April Trafton.
Hello, uh, good morning, my name's April Trafton, I'm President of Donald Dickerson Associates, I'm also on the Green Code Council for IATMO, the Chairman of the Mechanical Code, uh, IATMO Mechanical Code, and a voting member of the IATMO Plumbing Code. I've also been very lucky to be, uh, part of the Plumbing Design for this Los Angeles for our, our firm for over fifty years. I think as a second generation Los Angeles resident and a fifth generation Californian, we absolutely have to take care of water for this city and for our future generations. When twenty something years ago we made that change to the one point six flush, there was a huge uproar. Nothing really bad has happened, all we did was save water. With this new ordinance, we will not only save water for what we need now, but save it for future generations. I really hope this council passes this much needed ordinance, thank you.
Thank you. Jamie Valdivia, followed by David Otterstein.
Good morning, Mr. President, City Council, staff, um, I'm here representing the Piping Industry Progress and Education Labor Management Trust Fund, we work with over three hundred contractors and about ten thousand union members here in the plumbing and piping industry, and we're here to have strong support for this ordinance. You know, if, uh, if there's one thing that we need to change is our habits here on the water, in my own home, I went ahead and, uh, when I first moved in, had water closets that used three point five gallons, and I was utilizing an annual water of, uh, about twenty thousand gallons of water in a year, because of the, the people in my home here, we knocked that down in half by changing our water fixtures, so in money savings wise, we were actually able to save an additional nine hundred and forty dollars in the lifetime of our fixtures now, you know, just doing that. Imagine this is just one person, one home, what this would do for the city, thank you so much.
Thank you. David Otterstein, followed by Jerry Desmond.
Good morning, council members, David Otterstein with Piping Industry Progress and Education, I stand in support of this, uh, ordinance, um, as plumbing contractors and installers, we install the codes and standards, and these codes and standards are very important to us, that dictates how we put piping systems in. With this additional language, it will make, it will put the backbone in, into our business. What we do, the end user dictates what we install, what fixtures are put in, the end user asks us to put those fixtures in. The language in this ordinance will give a little backbone and, and have the end users help us to put in fixtures that are water efficient, is going to help the city grow into the future, and help our families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Desmond, followed by Jay Chase.
Counsel, I'm Jerry Desmond Junior, representing the Plumbing Manufacturers Institute, or PMI. PMI members manufacture approximately seventy-five percent of the affected product, and we've been working together with, uh, Department of Water and Power to make sure the specifications and the definitions will provide the appropriate guidance and, as the industry works to comply, and we are, uh, committed to work together with the city as it is rolled out. If there's one, uh, caution we have is that we know it's an aggressive timeframe with December of this year, um, and that, uh, there may not be the total amount of affordable, effective, competitive marketplace, but as it rolls out, we're committed to work with the city to make sure that we can transition to the new standards. Thank you.
Jay Chase, followed by Russ Cheney.
Good morning, Honorable Commissioners, my name is Jay Chase, for the past thirty-five years, my company, Mirror Chase Plumbing, has been working throughout Southern California in the high rise buildings, and primarily downtown Los Angeles, Century City, and the Valley. The installation of high efficiency, water conserving plumbing fixtures is a solution to our current water consumption crisis. Over the past four years, at the old Arco Towers, two fifty story buildings downtown, the City National Bank Buildings now, owned by Thomas Properties, we've been remodeling the buildings. We have replaced over six hundred three and a half gallon toilets with one point six type, over three hundred urinals, one and a half gallons to a half gallon, six hundred metering faucets, and three hundred total dual flush handles. This is just one example of building owners saving water and saving money. Thank you.
Russ Cheney. Remember folks, you have one minute on these matters.
Uh, Mr. President, council members, good morning, I'm Russ Cheney, I'm the Executive Director of the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials, or IATMO. We've had the honor of publishing the Uniform Plumbing Code, which is used here in the state of California, as well as, uh, other states throughout the United States and numerous countries. And, uh, last year this council honored our organization for eighty years of public health and safety, uh, and our contribution to the state of, uh, California, and most importantly, to the city of LA. We certainly support, uh, the passage of this ordinance, because it recognizes, uh, the need for enhancing the low flow plumbing fixture requirements that are in place on a voluntary basis in the United States. The EPA has had a program known as Water Sense, which has most of the low flow plumbing fixture requirements that are embedded in this ordinance, however, that program is voluntary, and as a consequence, these requirements are not implemented, uh, universally as they should be, so we, we support you.
Thank you, thank you. Timothy Allison, our final speaker will be Suzie Centenem, Centenina, go ahead, sir.
Uh, Mr. Allison was, had to leave, my name's Mike Gann with Department of Water and Power.
So you have to fill out a card, please.
I have a statement to read for him.
Go ahead, go ahead and fill out a card after.
Okay. Water, it makes up sixty percent of your body, seventy percent of your brain, and eighty percent of your blood. You can go one month without food, but only one week without water. The same water has been on our earth for four point five million years. Only three percent of the water on our planet is fresh water, and most of that is locked up as ice. Less than one percent of our fresh water is accessible for human use. Said differently, only seven one thousandths of the earth's water is available to drink, and twenty-five percent of the water that enters your home goes down your toilet. In the twentieth century, the earth's population tripled, while the use of water went up by a factor of six. By 2020, the LA basin is expected to have twenty-two million people, each using an average of a hundred and sixty gallons of water per day by today's standards. Millions of people on the earth live on less than three gallons per day. Many postulate that we will run out of water before we run out of oil. It will be interesting to see how the global powers restructure in that event. Water, use less, save more, advocate always. When the city of Los Angeles acts, others will follow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, please fill out a card on, for the record. Suzie Centenina.
Good morning, council members, my name is Suzie Centenina, and I'm a water quality scientist at Hill Bay. Um, it's a pleasure to speak before you today in support of this ordinance. Clean water is a resource that's much too precious to waste, and when it comes to conserving water, water efficiency is the best place to start. It's like the low hanging fruit of decreasing demand, because for little or no difference in expense, efficient new fixtures such as those required by this ordinance can be installed and lead to high cumulative water and monetary gains over time. Another thing to note is the tie between water and another important resource, which is energy. According to the Energy Commission, nearly twenty percent of California's electricity goes toward water. As we know, energy production is a huge contributor to greenhouse gases that contribute to global climate change. So essentially, increasing water efficiency on the local level has global ramifications. To sum it all up, this ordinance just makes sense, so thank you for your time, and I hope you pass it.
Thank you. Matt Dowd in San Pedro, our final speaker, then we'll get to our council members. To San Pedro, Matt Dowd.
Yes, thank you, so first of all, all the buttons are set to yes, the council members may not, you might as well save time, don't even comment, just kick it through, you know it's going through. I mean, it's a big I told you so for us, first of all, we talked about the water crisis, there's no, there's too many people in the city, too much development, too many condos, too many campaign contributions to the mayor, and then he doesn't actually deliver to those Merrill Maddox, all those guys are left holding the can. So, we're at this point now where, of course, it's a good idea to save water, I've been saying that forever, but it needs to be voluntary. Now you're making everybody have low flow, so it's un-American. Now, if you, if you've got the money and you want to pay for water, why, and you want a high flow, you know, if you, you're, you're just taking it away from everybody because you put too many people, and now there's not enough water, so now you got to ration it to the whole city, it's ridiculous.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn, followed by Mr. Reyes and Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, I, uh, appreciate all the public comment in support of this ordinance, I'm in support of this ordinance, uh, just one of the questions I had, and if somebody could, uh, maybe answer that, uh, certainly, a huge part of our water conservation, particularly with, with new developments, is going to be the idea of, uh, dual pipes, purple pipes. Was wondering, um, why we're not mandating that as a part of this ordinance, uh, because again, it does make sense to have all of these, uh, water conservation facilities, uh, in new development or rehab, seems to me this is the right time to include this purple pipe mandate, but we know it's going to happen someday in the city of Los Angeles, wouldn't this be the right time, uh, to include it in this ordinance, and if not, why not?
My name is Jim Caldwell, and I'm Assistant General Manager for the Department of Water and Power for Environmental Affairs, and first of all, I'd like to distinguish what we call purple pipe, which is the supply of recycled water, from what we call dual plumbing, which is sort of the demand side, or what goes on inside the building.
Okay.
And we made the conscious decision to take this plumbing fixture ordinance first, and we're working on a second plumbing ordinance for buildings, which includes dual plumbing, gray water, sub metering, and a few other odds and ends, if we, we, we're working hard to bring that back first to our Board and then to the council.
So, with these, um, buildings that are constructed or rehab under this ordinance, would they have to then go back and install, um, the purple pipes, or would that just be moving forward?
That would be moving forward, we're also...
Yeah, I think we're missing an opportunity, and...
We're researching the details of how the plumbing codes work, and where they go, and how to make all these things fit together.
I just feel like it's a huge part of our conservation is recycling.
It is, there's no question.
Recycling, recycling, using it again.
Yes.
For, uh, a lot of purposes.
Yes. Yes.
So, I still haven't gotten a good reason why we're not including it.
Again, it's, it's the details of which buildings. If, if we are never going to have recycled water to a building, then it makes no sense to incur the expense of the dual plumbing. In that case, we will have other means of taking care of it. So, we're, we're working on, and I have here Jim Yanata from the department, who's working on the supply plan for, for purple pipe. And what we're trying to do is to work the supply plan and also work with Department of Public Works, Building and Safety, and Bureau of Sanitation on things like low-impact development ordinances, which look at cisterns, which look at rainwater capture, and try to make, make all of these things make sense. If we, if we do this piecemeal, then what happens is, is the building owner will get stuck with putting something in that we're never flanged up. So, so the departments, the city agencies are all working together to try to do this. This is the first of us, this particular ordinance is the first of a series that you will be seeing.
When do we think the next phase of the dual-pipe, purple pipe will be in effect in the City of Los Angeles? When can we reasonably expect that?
I believe the next one will be a low-impact development ordinance, and then the ordinance time, speaking of, may be shortly following. We hope to have the ordinance put together, at least in draft form, by the end of the year.
Right. I really want our city to be, you know, where we, we use the water like six times before it ever goes away permanently. That's our, should be our goal.
That's right.
I'm Jim Yanata, Assistant Director of Water Resources. We're working very aggressively to expanding the recycle water system in the City of Los Angeles. We're right now developing a master plan to see where in the city we could, we could expand the system, where is there recycled water available from the wastewater treatment plants, what other means as far as getting water potentially from other cities to help us replace the need for potable water. But that plan is going to take from now to the next, next 18 months. We currently have projects that are, that right now are being done. We're installing now over 20 additional miles of pipe. We already have 40 miles of pipe in the ground. We already have golf courses, other large users that's on recycled water.
Right.
But again, this plan is going to identify where in the city do we have customers who have an appropriate use for recycled water?
Right.
That's accepted by the Department of Public Health.
Right.
And then where is the supply of water coming from?
Right.
We only have limited supplies from some of our plants, but we have a very aggressive plan. Right now, the water plan states that we're going to achieve at least 50,000 by the year 2019. We plan on not only meeting that, but exceeding those goals. So, we have, we have projects right now that are currently going on. We're going to be developing new projects based on the master plan to identify where else can we build it out. And as, as Jim said, it's not all areas are going to have recycled water because that's not going to be possible. So, we're trying to determine what, what's the best way for us to fashion an ordinance so it's going to be fair to development.
Okay. Thank you. So, I'm in favor of this ordinance. I'm just, I can't wait till we get to the next step. I think there's more to do, and I think the water crisis is going to become more severe in the future, so I want us to be ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I thank each one of you for your hard work. You know, you come before my committee, were able to engage some of the industry folks, some of the concerns. I can share with your colleagues that on July 10th, we had this conversation with the new Director of Urban Affairs for President Obama, Adolfo Cardián, and he was speaking to the fact that by the year 20, year 2050, 70% of the world population will be in urban cities, will be in urban centers, in cities. And so, the measure we're taking today is critical to begin how we pace ourselves as a society in dealing with this very precious element. But I'd like to ask the CLA to come to the table because I do have a question. Given all these efforts we're doing as a city, does this make us any more competitive or qualify us so that we could engage the federal government in dealing with more resources when it comes to water preservation, dealing with ecosystems? There's a whole range of departments at the federal level. Looking at Director Cardián and his new role in urban affairs, does this put us in any particular advantage, given that we're implementing these policies with the great help of the Department of Representatives here in front of us?
Good afternoon, Councilman Raphael Prego, with the CLA's office. Upon review of the economic stimulus plan and so forth, the federal requirements, and a view of the department's proposal, it actually puts us at an advantage with regard to acquiring those funds.
An advantage?
Yeah, correct.
So, when we start talking about different programs you want to implement and trying to leverage federal resources, are there specific departments you could mention or report to this council as to where we should be heading for these kinds of competitive programs?
Perhaps Building and Safety, which has been part of this working group, as well as Department of Water and Power and Bureau of Sanitation.
Okay, so, colleagues, and maybe we should get a report back to see how we actually posture ourselves in dealing with water issues, given the whole range of challenges we have from the harbor to the river, our impacts on the beaches, looking at our stormwater harvesting technologies, storing water for future uses. And these are all elements that speak to how we recycle water and keep it from just flowing into the ocean and losing millions and millions of dollars of water that we're essentially just throwing away. Because we have yet to capture these technologies in a way that helps us expand the use of our, of our water. So, is that a report back we can get from you? Is it appropriate to do that at this time? And if we can get that report back, Mr. Siro?
Caldwell, I'm sorry. Yes, I'd be happy to work with you and understand exactly what it is that, that you're looking for. Certainly, we have all of these plans that we can put together. We can work with the CLA's office to put together a report at, at your convenience at wherever as, as we, as we go forward.
Well, if you look at what the Indian Empire is doing, and this is a great article the other day, and how they're capturing the stormwater, how they're actually re-establishing their aquifers, they are actually looking at a very proactive strategy. We were to do even a fraction of what they're doing, perhaps a lot of our superfund sites that are underneath the city could have a real chance of actually becoming much more...
Understand. We're, we are working directly, that, that particular piece of the puzzle, we're working directly with Public Works, and they have an ordinance in preparation, which is called the Low-Impact Development Ordinance. And that ordinance speaks specifically to rainwater capture and then reuse of the rainwater on site, so water storage and so forth. So, what we're doing is, is we're working to make sure that our ordinances for things like gray water are compatible with those ordinances so that, again, that all of our requirements make sense and that they're seamless, and that we do work, again, and as you say, it's extremely important that we not only clean our groundwater that exists now that's contaminated now, but also to recharge it with our local supplies, and then saving some of that water, which comes in the winter, saving it on-site to be used during the summer when the irrigation thing is, is a piece of that puzzle, too. So, making sure that all of those things coordinate is what we're about.
And, Councilmember, we already have significant progress on implementing projects to capture stormwater. We're working with the county, with Army Corps of Engineers, other city departments for projects such as redoing the Tohanga Dam. We're also redoing the Hanson Spreading Grounds, Tohanga Spreading Grounds, so that we could capture a minimum of 20,000 additional acre per year in the San Fernando Basin to recharge the San Fernando groundwater basin itself. We have several projects that we're currently working on. That's part of what's in the water plan for the City of Los Angeles. Also, another key element is cleaning up the San Fernando groundwater basin. We have significant efforts going on to identify where all the polluters are and implementing projects. We are, already are installing wellhead treatment at two wells in the Tohanga Spreading Grounds. We anticipate having significant treatment facilities in the San Fernando Basin so that we will be able to fully utilize our annual adjudication of 87,000, along with taking out stored groundwater that we already have in the basin. So, these are efforts that, that is going on now that came out of the water plan for the City of Los Angeles.
Great. And again, two last points is our dependency on bringing water from other areas will lessen as we continue to build upon this strategy that you are right now giving us the rough sketch of our water plan, and that, for that, I thank you. But secondarily, when we put forth opposition with the hard work of Councilman Garcetti and Councilman Perry, and actually the voting public supported it, a large percentage of folks, I believe, have the impression that we were eventually going to break the cement in the LA River waterway, that we were going to have a real connection to the system you're speaking to, and how we give this great city a facelift, and now we're dealing with the water issues, but all the ancillary benefits that come from it. So, in your water plan, when are we going to get there?
Well, these significant water storage projects for capturing stormwater are going to be done within the next 10 years. We already have, we already have several projects that will be done within the next two or three years. But I think what you're referring to is more on along the LA River, what can we do? The DWP, I'm the co-chair of the Wiser Committee with the, with the Bureau of Engineering, looking at what opportunities we have within the city to see on city property and others, what can we do to have it environmentally friendly, to where we could store more groundwater, and also beautify areas along the river.
Well, in the next five minutes, I'll be meeting with Terrance C. Rockstop. He's the Principal Deputy Assistant Secretary of the Army Corps for Civil Works, and we're going to be asking him how we can move this river plan, get it finished so that we can be guided by the federal, county, and state in how to get that action realized, hopefully before half of us leave this horseshoe. And so, I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Rosendahl.
Speaking of leaving the horseshoe or being on it, Mr. Garcetti worked on this for seven and a half years to get to this point here today. I've only been around four years, a little bit of a rookie still, but I am absolutely thrilled we've reached this point. Last night, I held a community meeting. I have a Environmental Empowerment Congress, and they turned out 300 citizens for a meeting to talk about how we, on our own private level, can deal with the water issue. And there were hundreds of suggestions and ideas, and then Ed Begley gave a speech, but people are empowering themselves. And what I'd like to ask you, if you could, is list in a very simple way for people watching us there on Channel 35, what can we do immediately? I see stuff about this that talks about the toilets and, and how we should go forward with, with more efficient toilets, with, with turning off urinals, like I believe in waterless urinals, all kinds of things. Do you have a list of specific things that will be part of whatever we end up in this ordinance for, obviously, new developments and for anybody rehabbing? And then, Mr. Kurtz and I have been talking offline about the granny units. There's 70,000 at least units out there that aren't in anybody's books that are illegal units, but people are living in it, that we want to bring out of the dark someday and let them have the right electric, the right water, you know, and, and grandfather a lot of the other issues in. But what are the specifics, as you see, once we approve this, that people can hear about right now?
I think, I think this issue of, of, you know, when we will get there, I don't think that we will ever get there, that by the time we get wherever we're going, then we will see another suite of things to do from there on out. This is life's work. We are going to, over time, become much more efficient. We've seen it in cities all around the world. We use roughly three times, for example, the water per capita for a city like Melbourne, Australia, which looks about just like us in terms of climate, in terms of economics. They're in the 15th year of a continent-wide drought. We're in the third year of something. This is a journey. This is not something that we're going to pass an ordinance and say, "We're done." I think the biggest thing that someone can do right now, besides listening, besides hearing these things, is, is really to fix leaks.
Fix leaks?
That is one thing that, that it is difficult to pass in an ordinance, but leaks in, in plumbing inside the house, irrigation systems outside the house, there are mechanisms, there are procedures that you can follow through, and I think that's the biggest thing that an individual can do today because that then establishes his awareness of what his bill is, where the water's going, and then to take advantage of all of these things as they come out. We'll get you the fixtures, we'll get you the purple pipe, we'll get you the recycle. But I think the individuals at the other end fixing leaks is probably one of the biggest things that they can do.
Yeah, I like that. What's another quick thing?
You know, also just our daily behavior. If you're going to brush your teeth, turn the water off while you're brushing it. When you take a shower, take a shorter shower. And also make sure, because 30% of our water use, at least 30%, is for exterior use. Be very smart, abide by the water conservation ordinance. We're in Phase 3 now. You should only water two days a week. Make sure you limit it to, you know, the time necessary. But it's very important, there's a lot of things that people can do in their daily activities to cut down water use, both internally and on the outside. And right now, I'm going to have to redo my back lawn because I want to put in drought-tolerant stuff. But there's, there's a lot of things we could do just on a behavior standpoint to change how much water we use. That's why the last 20 or so years, we were so successful. We're using about the same amount of water now, you know, as we did 25 years ago, but we have more than 1 million more people. That's because of the previous ordinances to put in the low-flow toilets of 1.6, requiring these low-flow devices. Now, we're going to the next step to even make it much more efficient.
And also, you said 30% of the water we, we use outside. We know we cannot do any watering from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, seven days a week, period, no watering at all. Secondly, that you can use a hose, that you have a turn-on, turn-off before 9:00 and after 4:00, but you can only use a sprinkler twice a week, Mondays and, and Fridays. But if we were to just follow that, I mean, I still see gardeners, as I'm driving to work at 9:30 watering. That's against the law, right? Okay. So, also, what I have seen, at least in my district, I know it's happening throughout the city, people are planting drought-tolerant plants. I mean, I have woodchips on the front of my yard, and I have cactuses, you know, and people are actually doing that. And we, as a city, in every city space, and I say this to Public Works especially, as you're making mediums, as you're doing other things, no more grass. We love grass, but it doesn't belong here anymore because we can't afford the water. What do you say about grass?
Well, you know, grass is very nice to have, except that it's not really California-native. So, what we need to do is move toward Californian-native, California-friendly type planting and so forth. And it's just a reality, we, we can't afford to have lush green lawns anymore. We just can't afford it.
Thank you.
I think I would say that, that, that the people are responding.
Yes, dramatic.
I mean, that we have tried very hard to get the word out, and now we're beginning to see the results. When we look at our water sales, when we look at flows through Hyperion, I was, I was talking to Building, or to Department of Sanitation this morning, and they're seeing it, that in the month of June, the city use is the second-lowest month of June on record in this city for the usage of water. The people are responding, and we think we should, we should just keep it up. I think we just keep on going.
I was so amazed last night to have over 300 people in the Mar Vista Rec Center that came throughout the district, taking notes and writing down how they could go back home and that night already start to conserve more water. So, I think we're on a, on a major new moment. The only thing I disagree with you, what you said, with Australia and all, I want to accelerate it. We can't dilly-dally on this. Time has run out. Climate change is real, and we do have a limited water supply here, and we must conserve now.
Couldn't agree more.
God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti, great leadership.
Mr. Cardenas?
Call for the question.
Calling for the question. The final speaker is Mr. Cardenas. That question's now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Congratulations. Forthwith.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Number 54 is the next item up. 54.
And that was called special for cards as well.
All righty.
Councilmember, before we do the public hearing, we're going to get some cleanup language. Does the attorney respond to that?
Mr. City Attorney, on number 54, we have some cleanup language that you want to... Mr. City Attorney, on number 54, we have some cleanup language that you want to present?
Yes, Mr. President.
Then we'll go to the public, and then we'll hear from the council members.
Mr. President, regarding item number 54 and the proposed amendments, I would suggest that an amendment be made to this, so that the following items be placed in 12A of Rule 12. The paragraph starting disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior, a breach of the peace, disobedience of any lawful order, and any other lawful interference be placed in 12A. And then also, a slight correction be made to the paragraph immediately preceding those four, in which it states, including committing of any acts of disruptive conduct described in subsection A.
Very well. We have cards from the public on this matter. Dr. Clyde Williams, followed by Michael Hunt.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Barrett Road, El Sereno. We're on a slippery slope. When does disruptive behavior become a legal penalty? When does boisterousness amongst elders become a penalty? 10 weeks of prohibition of participating in public meetings seems to be a little excessive. All of these things have one basic element, the rights of people to petition their governments in a manner that is inappropriate for decorum. We've gone through this before with the word "fire." We've had a whole bunch of different laws passed. Why can't we just say, "No masks," and leave it go at that? And then leave it to the people to obey. Thank you.
Michael Hunt, followed by Arnold Sachs.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. First of all, I'm the first African-American that came in here a year ago with a KKK outfit. It wasn't a big deal, until you guys made it a big deal. Number two, it wasn't to be threatened or to any kind of racism issue. It was to protest that the city currently owes me $475,000, and that they need to pay their bills, just like they paid the white people. Let's get that clear. Now, in direction to the Brown Act and Section 403, that is actually, that you guys are trying, or that you guys say you guys may try and convict people on, we're filing an injunction on the rules, so that you guys can't enforce them anymore in federal court. So that right there will take precedence over that, and I'll be able to come in here whenever I want to, and you guys won't have no authority. All I'm asking for is my paycheck. It's a big difference. I'm not doing, I'm not promoting any racism. I'm protesting that I was treated differently from the other people, where you guys just wrote them a check for $250,000. I won in jury, and I still can't get my money. So the $475,000 is an insult to all the taxpayers, because you guys are paying interest on it, and you guys never beat Stephen Rhodey. It's like walking in the courtroom with Johnny Cochran. So why not end it here and get rid of me, so I don't have to be here? It's protest. The outfit was saying that you guys violated my First Amendment right, and that you guys need to pay, just like you guys did with everybody else. That's it, and that's all. It was a joke. It's on the Dave Chappelle Show. Listen. Hunt versus the city of Los Angeles with Eric Garcetti will clean you guys up.
Arnold Sachs, followed by Wayne Spindler. Arnold Sachs, take the microphone, please, sir. It's your turn.
My time is running. Precedent has been set. An amendment has been passed through the council chambers, and it was actually read in the council. So now we have another precedent. I'd like to point out, according to the Brown Act, so long as the body acts fairly with respect to the interests of the public and competing factions, it has great discretion in regulating the time and manner, which you plan on doing, as distinguished from the content of testimony by interested members of the public. I'd also further like to point out that members of the public have broad constitutional rights to comment on any subject related to the business of the governmental body. Any attempt to restrict the content of speech must be narrowly tailored to effectuate a compelling state interest. And finally, I'd like to report out Mrs. Leventhal versus Miss Unified School District, and Baca versus Marina Valley Unified School District. These decisions found that prohibiting critical comment was a form of viewpoint discrimination, and that such a prohibition prompted, promoted discussion artificially geared towards praising the status quo, thereby foreclosing meaningful public dialogue. You're just attempting to silence your critics. You took on an idiot, and you won. Congratulations. Now, let's see about getting a list of words that we can and cannot say. The FCC promotes a list of words that can't be uttered on public broadcasts. But cable is a different venue. If you're going to expose the public to certain rules and regulations, then you need to damn well spell out what those rules and regulations are right here, so that the public has a chance to see them. Otherwise, it's left to the whim and a fancy of a city council attorney.
Wayne, thank you, sir. Wayne Spindler. Thank you, sir.
I read this ordinance that you're proposing here. Number one, it's overbroad. I don't know which lawyer would draft such a ridiculous proposition as this, where you have one person, which is the city president, or anybody sitting in the president's chair, can act unilaterally to remove any speaker, and bar them from 30 sessions of the city council, or by a majority of the city council, which a quorum constitutes 10 members. What you're going to wind up doing with this ordinance, like so many of these ordinances, is that you're going to feed Michael Hunt another opportunity to litigate against the city. This time, it's going to be on First Amendment free speech rights, and his right to redress grievances. When he appeared here in the council in a KKK outfit, he wasn't promoting a Ku Klux Klon agenda. What he was doing was, is he was using the last resort that he has, which is symbolic free speech. He's trying to tell people, there's an issue. Nobody heard of this before. Now, the world knows that this man went to a federal jury, and is apparently owed a considerable sum of money, that this council has made no effort to settle with this man. Instead, the city attorney's office hires outside counsel, pays them tens of thousands of dollars to prosecute a Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal, and in the end, interest is accruing at 3.5%. And when you get done with the bill and the legal costs, they're going to exceed $600,000, $700,000, when they could go to this man and settle this. But because he's African-American, and because he had the guts to come here and seek the money, you're not going to settle. You're going to wait him out. He seems to be in good health, and he seems to be young enough, so one day, you are going to have to cut that check. Settle with him. Vote no on this motion. Have Carmen Trutanich look at this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Walter Beckteil?
Thank you again. I want to thank you for the motion. I don't know if it's drafted properly or not, but it does indicate that there's somebody up there thinking, other than being potatoes. Somebody was saying that they weren't getting paid, and that black people aren't getting paid. You know, I haven't been paid a dime for the thousands of songs that somebody feels that he's enamored or allowed to copyright. And if he just thinks that there's just some people from the black community, that's very wrong. Also, I do have evidence, if the city wants to see it, to show that many of these people weren't just white people. They were people of African ancestries. When they first started KKK, I can show you some pictures, and they weren't being forced to wear KKK outfits. Also, in the early 80s, when the skinheads started, many of those people were actually African-American people who started the skinhead movement. So I think you need to be more aware of that. But I don't think we're talking about that. We're talking about the credibility of this motion. Item number 54, it might not be drafted correctly, but it at least lets the people know that you are aware of what's going on. I just wish that you would be more aware of other things, especially like when you should be prosecuting some people in the entertainment industry, because you could retain money in the city instead of it floating out to other states, and many of these entertainers spend their money in other countries. So I hope this is a first step, even though it might not be properly done or correctly drafted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beckteil. We're going to go to San Pedro for Matt Dowd, our final public comment. Matt Dowd in San Pedro.
Yeah, thank you. The guy two back was spot on with a couple of things. First, Carmen Trutanich, city attorney, needs to get his eyes on this and make sure he's doing the right thing, because, let me tell you, I got his name on a document from LAX. They're trying to prosecute me for waiting at the beach now with a bike and a guitar. So that's Carmen Trutanich. Get him to look at it. And the city, he said they made no effort to settle with this man, Michael Hunt. Oh my goodness. They made every effort to put up every single legal, physical block. They arrested the guy off the beach on a Saturday morning, and they took him to jail for the weekend, so that he couldn't conduct his business. They would release him on a Monday. It's tantamount to kidnapping. Now we've gone full circle in America. We might as well rename this Britain. Let's rename it Britain. It's disgusting. It's really disgusting what you're doing here. You know, let me tell you about this one here. Sitting there in a KKK outfit, I've never seen him be disorderly. It's not a breach of the peace. It's not boisterous conduct. It's not violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. No, what disrupts the meeting is Herb Wesson getting up like a crybaby. His performance is that of a crybaby. He's the biggest little crybaby I've ever seen, if you cannot take the heat of a political forum in America, where people have got expression, which is protected under the decorum of the United States. Federal law has decorum. The United States has decorum. It's called the Constitution. It's called the Bill of Rights. The state government has decorum. That's called the Brown Act, and it relates directly to these forums where we speak. And if you're going to ban us for 30 meetings because we're insolent, then you might as well shut down Channel 35.
All right. We are now up to comments from colleagues. Mr. Wesson, followed by Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith first, and Mr. Wesson second. There you go. Mr. Smith.
I'll be happy to. Thank you, Mr. President. You know, ladies and gentlemen, I've heard people talk about we're abridging people's rights. For the people like Dr. Williams, they'll never have their rights abridged, because they've followed the rules. Society writes laws to take care of the problems of the outliers, the people who are extremists, the people who cause problems. From speeding tickets to murder laws, all those laws are written for the extreme little 1% of people, not the majority of people. The majority are protected by the laws, and that's what laws are all about. I've heard our speakers talk about they have the right to act the way they've acted. Well, over in the county of LA, you don't have that right. In the county of LA, you may not do what you do here. We've been very lenient for a long time. More importantly, I went to the court just the other day to watch a case where the city of LA was in court on a matter. In a court of law, you may not wear costumes. You may not sing. You may not dance. You may not carry on, and you may not yell and scream. The things that we've allowed here for a very long time are not allowed in a court of law. So if you want to sue us, go ahead, but the very judges who are hearing those matters do not allow you to do what you do in this chamber. I think we have a responsibility to allow public debate to be heard, to allow people who come here with good ideas, like Dr. Williams, and say, "I want to be heard. I want to present you ideas," to let them do that. But people who abuse the public sensibilities, and people who abuse the rights of the public to have legitimate discussions on items, and prolong these meetings for hours, for no other reason than they like to see their face on that television screen, is to no avail to the public. And I think that is what we're trying to do today. We just want to bring decorum to our process. If you want to speak before us, just follow the simple rules, and you will be allowed to speak. If you have great ideas, or tell us we're doing something wrong, you will have that right. That is guaranteed in our Bill of Rights, not our Constitution, folks, our Bill of Rights. And we are going to abide by that rule. We're going to allow that process to go forward. The Brown Act allows that and protects you. We are not abridging your rights, as long as you just provide a public comment that is in a dignified way, and germane to the subject, and not for the benefit of getting headlines or your blogs. That's what this is all about today. And I think we've been very, very lenient for a very long time, but the time has come to act, and the time is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members. You know, I probably wouldn't be, or many of us wouldn't be standing before you today if individuals didn't fight for our right for free speech, and our ability to say what we want to say. And I want to go on record indicating that I will do everything, as every member around this horseshoe will do, to ensure people are afforded the opportunity to speak their mind. And I don't care if people highlight me specifically, or other members specifically. That's not the issue. I think that the issue is that some degree of respect should be given to this place, this horseshoe. Only 4,000-plus Los Angelinos have ever had the opportunity to sit behind these, this desk. And I think we have a responsibility to the people of Los Angeles to show that we respect this place. Now, with that said, this chamber, as beautiful as it is, on a regular basis, is visited by young children. And I think, as adults, we have a responsibility to set an example for those who will later be sitting in these chairs. And I don't think that it is right to use certain language in front of these children. And if you do that, I don't think you are setting the type of an example that any adult would want to have occur. Now, what we are attempting to do today is really nothing special. Like Mr. Smith said, it is something that the county of Los Angeles has done, and I think that in this case, we should follow their lead. But I too want to reference, Mr. Williams, he comes here, and sometimes he's angry. He articulates his position. He respects that there are certain rules. Even Zuma Dog, for the most part, his problem is he gets so emotional that he gets loud. You have Michael Carrion, who comes here, who's a very, a friend of mine, and he is really angry. But he is a father, and he is a family man, and you never have to tell him to watch his language. You never have to tell him to respect this place. Ms. Pyramin, Ms. Fold, and we could go on and on. There is a way to articulate your position. And when you're here, in front of this place, which is the heart, a symbol of Los Angeles, I think that you should be able to say what you want to say, but that you should also respect others that are here. And I truly believe that we have a responsibility to protect our children, and I would ask that the members would join Mr. Smith and myself in supporting this. And lastly, it is my understanding, and I want to afford the new city attorney the opportunity to give suggestions where it relates to this issue, Mr. President, and I would like for them to take those suggestions and send them to the Rules Committee, which Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Hahn, and I sit on, so that we can come up with a way to make this better. We want it to be fair. We do not want to stop or hinder anyone's ability to speak. We want to do just the opposite. So I ask for an i-vote.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Garcetti?
I'd ask briefly our city attorney to come forward today. I want to thank my colleagues for their comments on this motion. When I thank my colleagues for their comments and on this motion, just want to clarify a couple of things for the record. It's my understanding about what's before us today. What you can and cannot say is not governed by us, correct? That is something that exists under the United States Constitution.
That's correct.
And what we have before us, does it in any way change what you can or cannot say here today? Are we imposing any rules on whether or not people can say certain words or not, whether they can use certain language or not here today?
That's correct. That doesn't change whatsoever. The key is whether there's a disruption.
And my understanding of the First Amendment, and I used to, this used to be one of the classes before I came here that I used to teach. It's one of the things that I love and embrace. We have some discretion on the First Amendment. We could be much more narrow in some ways with what we allow here. I think that's what's been articulated. But compared to our, you know, this isn't a dissent into authoritarianism. We actually have places right around us. I don't, you know, I don't love the Board of Supervisors always, but it's certainly not, you know, someplace that's a North Korean regime there. It is not a dissent into authoritarianism necessarily for us to be still wider than, but more, I want to be careful, because it's not constricted in terms of the speech, but in terms of the punishments for the violations of the decorum, rules of decorum here. We are not necessarily the most restrictive in the local arena on that. With these new rules, would we be?
The new rules really are consistent with what council currently is doing, and I distributed a digest of the decorum rules throughout the state of California, the city, the county.
So twenty-three different municipalities you looked at?
And twenty-three different ones, right. And the key on all of them is really whether there's a disruption. There's various different ways that they affect those rules of decorum now.
Okay. Let me just conclude with this, colleagues. I love the fact that we can have a group of visitors from China here who come and watch people who are upset with us and don't like us and criticize us. I like that we have students who come here, and that's part of the democratic process. We do this all the time, by the way, outside of here. So folks who think that it's just this difficult thing that we come in here and we hate it, I mean, we go to community meetings all the time, and that's the point of our work, is to get in the mix and to be criticized and sometimes be complimented, but I guarantee you, all of us get criticized more than we get complimented, because people who are happy with things don't necessarily show up. We deal with the anger. We work it out. We get opposing sides of things to work it out. I love that about this, these chambers. And as a person who sits in that chair more often than anybody else, I go wider than what I am legally allowed by the Constitution. So when people say that we're going beyond what the Constitution allows, that is just false. I mean, I've seen the case study. I appreciate what Dion has done. This is a very narrow drafting of, then what is the punishment? And places that have stricter punishments, people seem to behave better in terms of the disruption, which is why I appreciate what Mr. Smith and Mr. Wesson have brought here today, and I do support it. Because if there was anything that was taking away people's First Amendment rights, I'd be the first to vote against it. But this very specifically to me is not doing that, colleagues. What it is doing is that people who come in here, you may be just in what you're doing, but it may not justify what you are doing to us. Because if your point is, "I need to get paid for something else," fine, that doesn't mean you can break certain rules to do it. It doesn't mean you can go out and shoot somebody in the head because you want a payment. It doesn't mean you can crash a car because you want a payment. It doesn't mean you can jaywalk because you want a payment. We are responsible here in protecting the best of democracy, to allow us people to have every right to come here and to be critical of the people they have elected. But people have also elected us to get work done, and those who would be the very few who would try to disrupt the actual work for their own selfish motives. Sometimes they may be good selfish motives, but for their own selfish motives, that's what this is going to deal with. And I think it will give us a strong teeth to do that, and people can decide to do what they want, but we're still gonna be well within the law, and we'll be better protected, and we'll have better meetings because of it. So I urge your support.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Alarcon, followed by Ms. Hahn.
I would also ask the city attorney, could you, could you tell me what's different between this policy and the other policy? I can't tell.
There's a couple of different differences in the policies. The new policy will remove what in essence is a warning system. The current Rule Twelve is patterned after the rules in the city of Norwalk. Those rules were upheld in nineteen ninety in the White versus City of Norwalk case. And those rules allow the warning, and our current Rule Twelve has that warning. So that's one difference. The second difference is it does allow more discretion to the council president in determining the penalty, which actually is easier to implement.
Let it go back to step one. It eliminates the warning system?
Correct.
So we have no discretion? We go, we either use it or not, or?
Well, there's still, the bottom line is that the council president has discretion, and the body, if it disagrees with the council president, has the discretion to run its meetings in an orderly fashion. And that has been sanctioned by the Ninth Circuit, that power.
I'm still, I just want to focus on what the difference between the proposed motion and the old rules. That's all I want to know.
Okay. The warning system isn't there, and the punishment?
So the, does the chair have discretion to give a warning if they want to?
Yes.
Under the new proposal?
I believe so, yes.
So essentially, the president has the exact same authority, or?
Yes, yes. It's just that--
It's just a question of discretion, of whether you use it or not.
That's correct.
And with regard to the penalties, which is the other thing that's different? Describe the difference between the penalties.
And actually, it's just a nuanced difference. The current Rule Twelve has a penalty provision in Twelve D in which the council can ban somebody from speaking for up to thirty days. However, the implementation of that is somewhat awkward and is vague as to whether, is a motion required? Does there have to be a majority vote on it? So the new Rule Twelve would have--
Okay.
--would give the council discretion, or the council president discretion?
Members, for my part, the new rules, I'll go for them, because I don't see that they're very different from the old rules. I have to say this, though. I entered into community service because I wanted to help folks. And when I see some of the public comments and some of the speakers that are making comments and public comment, I'm re-inspired that we have so much more to do in our society, so much more to do with regard to issues of drugs in our society, so much more to do with regard to mental health issues in our society. I'm convinced by these speakers that we have not met our goal of changing our world to be a better place. I'm, I believe that we need to end homelessness, and some of these speakers reinvigorate my passion to do that, because they create such sadness in me that they are in such a condition that they would waste their time in city council to make superfluous arguments about things that we don't care about and will not act on. So I don't think we'll ever end it. I think it's going to continue, but for me, I choose to take it as a symbol of the work that we have to do to end the scourge of drug use and abuse in our community and mental health problems.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon.
If I could just add, I didn't add that the new provision is, has a penalty provision of thirty meeting days and not just thirty days.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. So just to be clear again, the three main changes of this new proposed ordinance are there is no warning, so someone could be thrown out of the meeting without a warning. However, the president still retains the right to warn if he wants to--
Correct.
--or he or she wants to. Any council member can do a motion to remove the person from the audience. Does there still need to be a vote, a majority vote, to remove somebody? How will somebody be removed?
It's the council president's discretion, subject to a majority vote overruling that by--
Oh, so the majority would have to overrule that?
Correct.
Okay. And the violator, the difference is the violator will be suspended for thirty council days.
Up to.
Up to, as a result of thirty days.
Right.
So it's just a little more.
And so ideally, it would be a graduated type of--
Well, you know, and again, sometimes we hear things we don't want to hear, and sometimes we're singled out for criticism, and it's never fun to hear that, but we certainly are public servants, and we're here to serve the public, and part of what we do is listen to public comment. I have always, as you all know, I've been one of those that always likes to let the public speak. I think they have a right to speak here, but as you brought up, this is not changing any of that. I was actually one of those that also had us move our public comment to the front of the meeting, because I'll never forget, we were here one day, and someone actually, we had to call the paramedics, because, actually, it was Larry Grant. He actually lost consciousness, because he'd been here four hours waiting to speak during public comment. So again, we serve the public, so we want to accommodate the public. And I'll just, this isn't a part of this, and maybe it's something we can still do a better job of here, because I know Tom talks about it a lot, when someone does come to the podium asking for help, sometimes they look into, you know, fifteen blank stares. Everyone's, the staff is looking at them blankly, and they're asking for help. And Tom always wants us to have like an odd spudsman, somebody here--
Oddspudspurssman.
Oddspudspurssman, that could help these people. So maybe we can move towards a more accommodating council when somebody does come to the podium asking for help, that we don't seem like we're not listening. And let's, we commit ourselves to paying attention when people do speak at the podium, because I do know that we get criticized a lot, because when someone takes the time to come down here to the city council, or to Van Nuys, or to San Pedro, they certainly expect, and I believe deserve, to have, as best we can, pay attention to what they have to say. So I will vote for this, but let's try to even work better at ways that we can help the public.
Mr. Cardenas.
I wouldn't want anybody to faint. I call for the question.
Thank you very much. There's no vote on this today. This matter will continue for one week, and we'll vote on this matter next week, just for the discussion. And Mr. Labonge?
Yeah, can we take twenty-three out of order?
Without opposition, number twenty-three. Mr. Wesson?
Explain that to me. It was explained that we, I thought we voted on it, or did something change within the last few minutes?
Pursuant to Rule Seventy-Seven, I think it is, the, any amendment to the council rules is presented and then held over for one week. So the actual vote, the final vote, will be next Wednesday.
But now, you're saying the only vote will be next Wednesday if we're not voting on it today, or are we voting on it today?
No, we're not voting on it today.
It's just presented today and then carried over.
Those are the rules that we follow, so today was the discussion. Next week, we'll vote. Ms. Hahn, you want to amend the rules? All right. Mr. Labonge, number twenty-three.
Thank you very much, members. I'd ask Mr. McCree and staff to sit here. What's before us is a contract that was reviewed by our committee. What's before us is a contract that has gone before the Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioners twice. What's before us is an issue that has started way back in two thousand and three, when this first RFP, two thousand and three, members. Now we've come to the point where they have made a selection. Mr. McCree and staff, would you please advise the council on what's before us and what we should do?
Mr. Labonge? Ms. Perry had her button pushed before you jumped up. Ms. Perry?
Mr. Chair, I did make a motion early for a continuance, and I don't have a problem with everybody talking today and testifying, but I would like to get my motion voted on. And the reason that I asked, and I will say this publicly, is because I was contacted by Michael Yamaki, who is representing the Kishi candidates in this process, and he asked for a continuance for two weeks so that he could be here to represent their interests. And so I want that to be on the record, that I did ask for a continuance, and I am not objecting to everybody talking today, but I would like my motion for a continuance to be voted on one way or the other.
Do you want that motion before us now, Mr. Cardenas?
No.
After the discussion, Ms. Perry?
Wait a minute. Point of clarification, Mr. President. I think that regardless of how people feel about the issue or not, I think that we need to follow the rules. So what's in order from the city attorney? What is in order at this time?
Yeah, what the city attorney has to say.
It's up to the discretion of the chair, but if there's a motion to continue, normally it's taken up after the discussion.
Oh, okay. Fine, let the discussion take, but I do want to have my--
No, wait, no, hold on, Ms. Perry.
I would like my motion--
Ms. Perry, you mentioned that you made a motion previous to this, on this matter?
Yeah, I made it earlier, when we were going through the agenda. I made the request when we went through the agenda, that I wanted this item continued for two weeks as a courtesy, per the request of Mr. Yamaki, as he's representing one of the candidates in this process. And that's all I asked. I did do it when we were going through the agenda.
Okay. Mr. Labonge?
I just want to make sure it gets voted on.
I do recall--
Thank you very much. I want to know, is anyone here representing Kishi here in the audience?
The problem--
Is anybody here representing Kishi here?
Mr. Labonge, who is Kishi? For clarification, who is Kishi?
It's one of the persons who bid on this contract, is the existing contractor, who's had a month to month for nine years.
If there is somebody here from Kishi, they are not the persons who requested the continuance. The continuance came from Mr. Yamaki, and as a professional courtesy, because he asked, I wanted to make the request as we were going through the agenda, and just get it voted up or voted down.
Okay, so now the matter--
Is Mr. Kishi the lawyer for them? Or Mr. Yamaki?
Okay, Mr. Labonge, Mr. City Attorney, during the morning session, Ms. Perry made the request to continue. There was no vote on that. The matter is now before us for discussion. And Ms. Perry's motion will then come after the discussion?
Normally, unless, unless council president would like to--
We'll do that.
--enter that motion now.
We will hear from the representatives, and then Ms. Perry can make her motion at that time.
Okay, well, I made my motion already for the record, so can we have a vote on it at that time?
Thank you. Mr. President, Mr. McCree, please, what's before us?
Veronica Selumbidas, with the Office of the CAO. The item before you is a concession agreement with Michael Leslie Productions Incorporated doing business as ready golf centers. The term of the proposed concession agreement is ten years with one five-year renewal option at the discretion of the city. The concession includes the operation and maintenance of the electric golf carts of the city's seven eighteen-hole golf courses. To select the contractor to operate the concession, the department released a request for proposal in April of two thousand and seven. The request for proposal indicated six criteria will be used to select the best proposer. One, ability to finance, operate, and sustain the concession. Two, qualifications and experience. Three, proposed carts and maintenance and replacement plan. Four, vision for concession, including business and marketing plans. Five, financial return to the city in the formal rental payments. And six, capital improvements. The department received three responses, five responses to the RFP. Three of the five responses were deemed responsive after a first-level review by department staff. Second-level review was conducted by Economics Research Associates. It's a consultant hired by the department to assess the process. They found that the three responsive proposers are financially able to provide the startup costs and operational costs, as well as financing for capital improvements. For the third-level review, the department convened a five-member independent panel, and the members were selected based on their experience and expertise in recreation, as well as the golf industry. The panel interviewed the three responsive proposers. They ranked the proposals, and Michael Leslie, Inc. was ranked highest and received an average score of ninety-seven out of a hundred possible points. Under the terms of the agreement, the concessionaire will pay thirty-nine percent of gross receipts from the operation of the electric golf cart concession. The concessionaire has also committed to invest a minimum of one hundred thousand dollars for capital investment. The concessionaire will be responsible for utility charges relative to its operation. Ninety percent of the revenues from the concession agreement will be deposited into the Department of Recreation and Parks General Operating Fund. Ten percent will be deposited into the golf concessions improvement accounts. There is no additional impact on the general fund.
Regina Ant, Executive Officer, Recreation and Parks. I'm going to give you a little bit of additional information, but also I have with me Robert Morales, the Senior Management Analyst in our Administrative Resources Division, and Robert oversees all of our concession agreements, and he will be able to answer any detailed questions that you may have. But I would just like to add to what Veronica just stated. For this process, we started this in two thousand and seven, and at that time, we started the process. We filed our notice of intent to contract with the CAO's Office, Employee Relations Division, so that the appropriate unions that might have been affected-- Division, so that the appropriate unions that might have been affected would know that we were going to do this. And this was an operation, and is an operation, that had already been contracted out. But we also, at that time, we filed the intent form, because it was time for us to try to move forward with the new contract. The current concessionaire has been on a month-to-month contract for many, many years. We also went through our board. We have a task force that is made up of two of our commissioners, and they held, we have at least nine public meetings that they held on this item. And at that time, the proposers were allowed to give input, as well as the affected unions, as well as for the public. So we went through nine hearings through that, and then through the full Recreation and Parks Board, there were at least three or four public hearings on this matter as well. At this time, what we are asking for is to move forward with the recommendation for the Michael Leslie Productions Doing Businesses Ready Golf Centers to move forward with the new contract to provide 490 electric golf carts on our various golf courses. This is also something that we've heard repeatedly from the public, that this is something that they would like to see, as far as for having new carts available for their use. We also have in here new items for us, so that we have a better ability to be able to have input as to the income that we're going to be receiving from this operations. With the current concessionaire, it is done on a basis whereby they collect the funds, and then they give us a proportion of the rent, and also their profit. But this item here, we would have a better input as far as for the city to be able to do that. Also, in this agreement, any of the employees that are currently under the current concessionaire, of course, would be brought under the new concessionaire. Those employees would have to be made whole. They are not currently receiving the living wage amount, and under this proposal with the new contract, that would definitely be something that would have to be done.
Members, there's the staff report there, the CAO's report. They recommend going ahead and approve this here. And also, our own union bid on this as well, is that correct?
Yes, in this process, what we did were, we first we put out the proposal, we received five proposals, three of them made it through the process. As Veronica had already stated, they were then sent to an independent panel for review. And we also had the Recreation and Parks Golf Division put in a plan, that we also could check to see if this was something that might be feasible for us to do as an in-house operation. We determined that that was not the, that this was not something that we were able to take on at this time, and especially in this economic climate, and also too, for us, we have many issues if we were to try to take this on in-house. Right now, for the city, there is a hiring freeze, and in order for something like this to be successful, we definitely would have to have a ready and available amount of staffing. And of course, when we, at this point for the city, when we have employees that do leave, it is not as quickly and simple to try to hire new staff. For this program to be successful, we thought that this was the best way for us to go at this time, and also too, this is a steady stream of income. And for us to take it on in-house, that may not be the situation for us.
Thank you very much. Madam President.
We have a few more speakers on this. Did you have any more comments, Mr. Labonge?
All right, we have a number of speakers, and I'll switch out of the chair.
We can't hear you.
I have a number of speakers, and some cards. We have two more council people who want to speak on this, and I will switch out of the chair in just a minute. Mr. Cardenas is our first speaker.
If you could be succinct with your answers, because I think we're losing members here. How many times did we go out to bid on this particular RFP?
It's approximately a third time that we've been on...
Third time in a row, right?
Right.
It's not like we had a successful process. We've been unsuccessful. This is the third one. So two of them have been unsuccessful. So how long ago roughly was the first one of these three?
Approximately 2004.
I'm sorry, 2000 what?
2004.
2004. So it's been about five years. And this particular process that we're speaking of right now started in 2007?
Right, April 2007.
April 2007. And how long has the current operator been on a month-to-month contract?
Since 2003.
Since 2003, so about six years. And in the meantime, we're still running our golf courses, and this is, this is a contract to do the golf carts on all of the city golf courses, correct? Not just one of them?
On all the 18-hole courses.
I'm sorry, you got to speak up, there's something wrong.
On all the 18-hole courses. There's seven courses.
Seven courses, thank you very much. I think it's important, council members, that we look at this process... Oh, one more question. Are we sure that we didn't violate any notice requirements? Are we in order when it comes to notice requirements?
Yes, Mark Brown, Senior Assistant City Attorney. I believe we did, by all appropriate Brown Act notice requirements.
How long ago was this item agendized for the city council, for today's city council meeting?
It went to Arts Parks Committee last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday, and then so it's on the floor today, a week later.
Yes.
Council members, I think it's important for us to understand that, notwithstanding any, if a person can't be here, or what have you, we need to look at the legal matter, I think, more than anything else. I happen to know Mr. Yamaki, he's a fine gentleman, he's a good person, or what have you, but this is a matter of looking at this, as we were just talking on a previous item, about what are the rules, what are the responsibilities, what confines us to do our job, and what parameters should we be working in. And the parameters I think that we should be looking at on this particular bid, is the fact that we have been atrocious in the city of having bid processes being thrown out, bid processes being convoluted, and then we are making a mockery of our own process when we do not respect the fact that when people put bids together, whether it's a small one or a large one, a small or large company could spend anywhere between several thousand dollars to hundreds of thousands of dollars, just to meet the requirements of going through the bid process. And then we end up throwing them out, sometimes I think for reasons that are unfair, and reasons that are possibly illegal. I think that in some cases, some of the reasons why people don't sue us is because they just want to have an opportunity to bid again, and they don't want us to look at them in a bad light, because we have, they have us in court legitimately. So the bottom line is, I think we should focus on whether or not this process was appropriate, whether or not it was legal, and whether or not it was fair, first and foremost. And it was. I recommend that we go through this process, having a vote on this today, as it is our responsibility. There's a reason why this is before the city council, is because we are the decision-making body when it comes to these matters. And I think that we should take it at that value, and not be looking at other things that will convolute it, and possibly cause us to just back off, and then maybe go back out to bid, which I think would put us, in my opinion, in a bad legal position on this particular bid.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Ms. Perry? Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I just want to say this in closing. This is a concession that has been inactive since Mayor Bradley was the mayor of, correct me if I'm wrong, John. And the people who run and own the concession are children of the members of the 442nd Go For Broke Unit, and, you know, they have an enormous amount of community pride in what they have done, because they are the only Japanese-American company, I think, in the history of the city to have ever done this. If I'm, again, correct me if I'm wrong. And so, when Mr. Yamaki asked, as a professional courtesy, to make sure that, he had the opportunity to come and speak on their behalf, on behalf of Kishi, to the entire city council, I saw nothing wrong with asking publicly and on the record. This is not an attempt to derail an RFP process, and I think you know that nobody has interfered with the process, made any calls, put any pressure, other than to ask that they be given full consideration out in public and on the record. And so, that's all I'm asking for today, is some professional courtesy, that's it. Two weeks, he's out of town, he'll be back, and just wanted to come and speak to the full council, that's it. So, all I want is a vote, either voted up or voted down, all I want is a vote. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Kretz?
Well, I'd also actually like a two-week continuance, and not for the reasons that you've expressed, but simply because this issue is one that I haven't really had a chance to fully explore, and I'm not entirely clear on why we would be contracting out when our own reports noted that there's only a marginal savings, and we have a city policy that we try to avoid contracting out whenever possible. So I'd appreciate a couple of weeks to look into that.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz. Ms. Labonge, to close?
Mr. McCree, how many employees did you have to get the sad news on disengagement? How much, if we ran this internally, how could that be done?
It would be, we always look first at internal operations. Unfortunately, this is really not a core function of this department.
Very good. Members, I ask that we follow the recommendation of the Recreation and Parks Commission, with all due respect to Mr. Yamaki, and all who've served this country, and who have been indifferent, that the process has been held by the commission, by the staff, and they've recommended this and we move forward with it. I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you, Ms. Labonge. Seeing other speakers, ladies and gentlemen, there is a number of comment cards here, but because this has already had a public hearing, there is no motion to have a public hearing at this time. We'll go to the vote. The first vote will be on Ms. Perry's motion. Okay, you weren't on the board, I'm sorry, but go ahead, Mr. Alkon.
Thank you for the courtesy, Mr. President. I understand Mr. Labonge will be out of town in two weeks. I understand you'll be out of town in two weeks.
I'll be here in two weeks.
You'll be here?
In two weeks.
You'll be out of town?
No.
Oh. I just, I don't mind a professional courtesy to give somebody a couple of weeks, but, Mr. Labonge, please, it's my time, thank you, thank you. All I'm saying is that I don't have a problem, but the only problem I would have is if any of the key players aren't going to be here. So if, if there was a way for us to pick a date when all the players will be here, and we can have the full discussion, I would prefer that. If Mr. McCree is not going to be available, I think that might hamper our decision.
Then I go to continue to August 11th. Mr. McCree, you backing on August 11th? Yes. Okay. Okay. August 11th, all people, anyone in this room who can't be here on August 11th? Okay.
On my time, I move that we change the date to August 11th, and consider it then.
Is that a second?
We can all be happy to have a full discussion, and I need more information as well, by procedure.
That will be a substitute to Ms. Perry's motion, because it has a date certain difference, so you'll accept that friendly amendment. With that, on Ms. Perry's motion then to continue, with the amendment to the 11th, that is on the floor now, that is what you're voting on. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Where is Mr. Yamaki? Where is Mr. Yamaki? Anybody know where Mr. Yamaki is?
I think he's out of town, and I've heard.
Never mind, never mind.
I don't, you know, I didn't ask him, he's just out of town. Okay, that's enough for that. Thank you very much. Will you please announce the vote? Thank you.
11 ayes.
That man passes. Thank you very much. Next item?
Next item is item 13, and that was called special for an amending motion that has been distributed to the council members.
Madam Clerk, where are we at?
Item number 13, that was called special for an amending motion that has been distributed to the council members.
All right, number 13. Any questions on number 13, on the amending motion, number 13? Very well, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next item, please.
Next item is 51, and that was called special for cards.
That was 51?
51, yes, sir.
51. We have Arnold Sachs on 51. Mr. Sachs? Mr. Sachs, he still here? Mr. Sachs is going to waive that, okay? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Very well, next item, please.
Next item is item 55, and that was called special for cards.
Number 55. Dr. Williams?
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Bear Road, El Serena, Northeast LA. Again, we have special events. Last time, you had significant events, and you need a procedure for both. I would highly recommend, again, using the LA city neighborhood councils for all special and significant events. Thank you, I'll save one minute.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Anthony Wayne Ford?
Hello, hello, hello. Thank you very much. I just have a special announcement. Just about an hour ago, I just received the fact that I will be employed with the Housing Authority. I just got a job...
Excuse me, this isn't regarding this issue.
But anyway...
Dr. Ford, stop for a second. Mr. Ford, please stay on topic.
There's an ongoing saga, I think we need to put this to rest. I think, at the time, I think we need to vote yes on this and approve it. I think at the time, it's trial and error, and I think through the trial and error, I think that's when we learn to change things as they are. I think we need to bury this whole Michael Jackson special event, and just be done with it, and approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Matthew Dobbs, in the San Fernando Valley. San Pedro. He's done? All right, he's done for the day. Thank you. There are no more speaker cards, no speakers in the queue. Would you please open the roll, Madam Clerk? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next item?
Next item is 56, and that was called special for cards.
All right, I have four cards on this. Dr. Clyde Williams again, followed by Doug Haynes, followed by Ziggy Cruz, and Wayne Spindler.
One minute, I think, okay. Capital funds being used for council staff positions. This seems like the CRA, where you can use capital funds for supporting operations and maintenance. I would highly recommend that you disapprove this, as it's going to be setting a precedence that can you use capital funds for your own operations and maintenance staffing? If you can do it, other people should be able to do it too. Share the pain. You're asking your other employees to suffer furloughs, and maybe even layoffs. So it's a question as to why privilege one for $75,000, when there's a lot of other areas where you could use $75,000 in capital expenditures. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Doug Haynes, following Doug Haynes, Ziggy Cruz. Is Mr. Cruz still here? Okay, or Miss, sorry. And Wayne Spindler, all right.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Doug Haynes, and thank you for your patience. This is the third year in which beautification money from the Street Furniture Revenue Fund has been diverted to pay for Ms. Bernard's work as a land use consultant for CD-13, and I would respectfully request, as a CD-13 constituent and neighborhood council board member, that next year, Ms. Bernard be given a full staff position with the benefits that she deserves. Doing so would provide Ms. Bernard with her proper due, and we want to have $70,000 or more taken each year from CD-13's limited beautification funds, which Hollywood in particular needs every penny of. It would also result in Ms. Bernard's work being more accountable to CD-13 constituents, who currently experience great difficulty in getting a return phone call on concerns regarding major development projects that will adversely affect our community for generations to come. This is a very convoluted process to have a representative planning issues for CD-13, and I understand that sometimes that's necessary in order to get the work done, but part of the contract states that Ms. Bernard will deal with proponents of projects, and it doesn't say anything about opponents. And the concern that I have is that the door is often shut to those opponents, and we don't have a voice with CD-13 on these major projects, because we don't even have a chance to be heard. So when I always am told that there's an open-door policy, in fact, that door is not open to us, and that's why we have controversy. And I would like to see that door opened a little bit further, so at times, we can actually speak about these issues with a dialogue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ziggy Cruz?
Good afternoon, council members, I'm Ziggy Cruz. Here's a question for you. Why does the city get creative to funnel money from one department, from one department to another, for consultant to a city council member, that does not show the same creativity to pay the city employees that work in the city planning department, building and safety, and so on, who are right now currently experiencing furloughs and pay cuts? Then again, this is not the first time for this type of transfer. Council file 07-0011-S28 shows that the same motion was introduced and voted on for the same individual back in 2007 and 2008. This actually is now the third time that this particular fund is being used to benefit one individual, even though the fund was created to benefit an entire community. Your motion is to transfer up to $70,000... motion is to transfer up to $70,000 from the Council District 13 portion of the Street Furniture Fund to another fund, in order to benefit just one person, who is a consultant to the council member. This pretty much means that you're taking away this money from our community, to give it to one particular person as a pay. Especially at a time where city workers are getting pay cuts and have to deal with the furloughs, this is a rather wrong move or approach to keep one individual paid on. Thank you.
Wayne Spindler?
Yes, as far as land use issues, we have a city attorney's office. There's a woman that works there, her name is Jane Usher, and anything you need to know about land use, zoning, permitting, she's right over across the street on the eighth floor of the city attorney's office, and she's there Monday through Friday. And you can go over and email her, she'll talk to you anytime you want, but sitting here and giving somebody an unwritten contract for $70,000, subject to amendment, again shows why the city is bankrupt. You can't continue to divert money from a fund where it's supposed to go for something and give it to something else, and this is for one council member. It makes no sense, and now we understand that this has happened multiple times. Has there been any competitive bidding? Have there been other candidates for this position? Has it been recruited based on minority business enterprise standards? Has it been based on any other standards of preference? Can we get stimulus money to fund this position if it meets certain criteria? None of this has been addressed in this motion. What you have once again is this is a pet project, this is basically a transfer of taxpayer money, a significant amount of taxpayer money, to go to one person, for one council person, while we already have people employed by this city that are more than capable of handling these issues as far as land use. There's even another situation where you're going into Forest Lawn, and you're going to condemn by eminent domain a piece of parcel on one of the most expensive tracts of land in the United States of America, when we have a $900 million deficit and growing in the city, it's approaching a billion dollars. Why is this being done? You have to stop doing this. If you want to do land use, eighth floor, city attorney's office, and you've got plenty of people in there that can help you with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we go to San Pedro for Christine Bryant.
Hello, council members. I'm Christine Bryant, and I do agree strongly with Dr. Williams and Ms. Cruz. This money should not be diverted for one specific use. It was applied to the street funds, it should stay there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine? Sorry, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. I just wanted to state for the record, since there was some misinformation, this is a contract for Ms. Kelly Bernard, who is my planning director, and she doesn't serve one person, she serves at least 250,000 people in my district, meets with opponents and proponents all the time, does an extraordinary job, is somebody who works part-time because of family issues, and this is a way of doing part-time, so given the opportunity to go full-time, she has opted not to, but does such extraordinary work representing people in 13th District. Not only can they meet with her, I have office hours, and any of the folks that would like to come in, and some of them that spoke today, I know a couple left, have come and met with me in office hours directly about any planning and land use issues. It's one of the things I'm proudest of, having met with probably about 10,000 hours' worth of constituents directly, one-on-one, face-to-face, without anybody else there. So, in continuing a lot of that, she really makes sure that our neighborhood councils and others know the information. She oversees another employee, who also meets quite often from our planning land use development section, as well as our city council employees. The only reason I stood up on this, colleagues, is each one of the people who works in our staffs actually serves the people of Los Angeles, and we took a cut that was deeper than any other departments in our own staffs, not because they promote us as individuals, but they actually do hard work of filling potholes. I know they've worked with Ms. Cruz on many different things before, on community gardens, on other things, and it's very easy to come in here and badmouth that, but I do know that Ms. Bernard is the model for work. She is somebody who has worked here for three different council members and a mayor, and I think she does extraordinary jobs, so I ask for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Madam Clerk, if you would please open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item. And then, can you have that go forthwith, please? There's been a request to make that forthwith.
Madam President, I believe there's a request to take the closed session item from the special meeting, and do you wish to recess and go into that?
All right, let's recess the regular meeting, go into the special meeting very quickly. Take the roll on the-
And Madam President, this item is a closed session item, and the settlement amount could be done in open session, unless there's a request by any council members to go into closed session.
Members, are there any requests to go into closed session on the special agenda? Otherwise, we can vote on the settlement issue. Any requests to go into closed session? Seeing none?
And Madam President, the settlement, in this case, it's the League of Residential Neighborhood Advocates versus City of LA, and the settlement amount is attorney's fees of $340,000.
All right, if you would please, excuse me? Go ahead and open the roll on that, please. Close the roll, and then tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
We will send that item forthwith, and if you would please adjourn the special meeting-
Madam President, I'm sorry, there's another item, no, I'm sorry, that is it for the special meeting, sorry.
Okay, please, let's go back to adjourn the special meeting, and then we go back into the regular meeting.
Then the next item is item number 66, and that was called special for cards, and there is a substitute motion that has been distributed to the council members.
All right, cards on item 66. Anthony Wayne Ford and Wayne Spindler?
I suggest that you vote no on this item. The MTA can't handle its own business here in the United States, why should they handle any other business abroad? Thank you very much.
Mr. Spindler?
This is another example of why this council is overpaid and doesn't do anything for the taxpayers. This is a matter that you consult with the State Department, and the Department of Commerce, and the Department of Treasury, and the World Bank. This has got nothing to do with a local municipality in the city of Los Angeles. The government of Iran, according to Barack Obama, is recognized by the United States. The president, despite the fact that there was a somewhat disputed election, and we may not have liked the result of that election, it is a nation recognized by the United States and the United Nations. Siemens Corporation may do business with this nation of Iran, but if they have the technology and services that the city needs after competitive bidding, why can you deny them contractual basis with the MTA or any agency in the city of Los Angeles, when they are free to do business around the world? You look at the sponsors of this, I worked on David Vaheidi's campaign against Paul Corretz over there. Now, he would have been the first Iranian-American to serve on this council, to my knowledge, so he's not here to speak today, I don't know what he would say about this, but there's many people of Persian descent that are fighting right now to try to resolve the problems in their country. If you do something like this, what you're really telling the people of the world is, Los Angeles doesn't like Persian people. Los Angeles doesn't want to do business with Iranians, and that's a lie. When you go especially into CD-5, with a very heavy and very populated and economically prosperous Persian community, I don't think they would approve of something like this. You have to vote no on something like this, because it would also open the city up to litigation in some form of either treaty power or federal law. Vote no on this. The city does not need to do this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Corretz?
Thank you, Madam President. I should note that this issue was originally suggested to me by the Persian community in my district, and we are focusing on this, and it largely was discussed previously, because Iran is a dangerous renegade nation. We are trying to put economic pressure upon them, as the state and the city and other entities did most recently with the Sudan, and in the case of the genocide in Darfur. This is a similar attempt. We have changed the motion slightly, based on Council Member Alakon's suggestions, to reference more clearly the city's previous legislation, Resolution CF-07-1784. I would also note that probably, I assume all of you, although I haven't seen it, were sent a threatening email by the Siemens Company, which notes, among other things, that this is transparently intended to obtain an exclusive opportunity for a competitor. I would just note for the record, I have no idea who else competed for this contract. I literally don't know who that competitor would be, and I would say it in a court of law. This is purely designed to target the companies that are major players, and propping up a renegade regime, and all the negative things that this regime has been doing. I ask your aye vote.
Mr. Alakon?
Members, as you recall, I had some concerns about the original motion, in that it was overly broad, from my perspective, to cover all companies doing business with the government, of which I have no idea who they are, but I've got to believe that some of the companies doing business with the government of Iran are companies that we do business with at the city of Los Angeles, and I thought that it would be contradictory to send a message to MTA to not contract with these companies, and we're contracting with them. So, to give you an example, Ford, Coca-Cola, and some of those companies that we have Googled and figured out that they do business with Iran, and we do business with them, it would be a contradictory message. However, we reviewed Council File 07-1784, regarding business activity supporting the Iran regime, and that resolution was focused on companies that do business in Iran's energy, defense, or nuclear sectors. With that, I have no problem. If any companies are doing business with Iran in those areas, then I think absolutely we do not want to support that, and I believe that Siemens absolutely does business in those areas in Iran, and therefore, it would be appropriate for us to send a message to the MTA, we do not support that. I also think we ought to check our own files, to make sure we're not doing business with companies that do business, and I believe there will be a subsequent motion to try and address them. But with that said, I do support this substitute motion to the original motion.
All right, Mr. Garcetti?
Very briefly, I know it's been a long day. Thank you, Mr. Corretz, and thank you, Mr. Alakon. I think it's true, whether it's Siemens, whether it's, some say Anselm, whatever the other company is, has a subsidiary that does some power stuff in Iran, I think this is a clean way of saying, we want to make sure that our city money, we're legally defensible, because there is federal law on some of these matters, that we don't go to invest our money, or encourage government agencies around us to invest their money in anything that would support the regime right now that's there in Iran. So, I thank Mr. Corretz for the motion, and how to join with him on that. And I think Mr. Corretz, for the record, is correct. This is something that I've spoken with many, many, many Persian-Americans about, and they have asked for this sort of leadership, just as many African-Americans did with South Africa, as Burmese-Americans have done in Burma, they have asked for a city to step forward. Because there's federal preemption, sometimes we have to do it in the right way, but I think this gives us the leeway to do that, and I urge your support as well.
Mr. Corretz?
And I would just note that we also introduced a motion today to review our own contracts, to be sure that we are not in violation of that policy as well.
Thank you very much. No further speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll on this item? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item. I believe there's been a request for also item 23 to go forthwith.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, item 49 to go forthwith. Okay, next item?
Madam President, the next item would be the closed session. Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yes.
Council has motions for posting a referral?
Okay, those motions are posted.
And there's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Smith requests to be excused Friday, October 16th, and Tuesday, October 20th. For personal business, those both meet council policy.
That'll be without objection?
And that would clear the desk for closed session, and that would be item number 62.
Item 62, all right. We can have the chambers cleared for closed session. Officers could assist us in preparing for closed session? Members, we'll go into closed session on this item, so we'll have to clear the chamber. Hang on, folks, we're trying to get back on. Are there any adjourned motions? Okay, we're back on. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Madam President, just for the record, that's item number 62, and that's settlement in the case of City of LA versus Rosen. Its condemnation case total settlement is $8.2 million. $5.4 was already deposited, and this is an additional
All right, please open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, Madam Clerk, what is our remaining business?
And that clears the desk.
All right, members, are there any announcements to be made today? Mr. LeBange, do you have an announcement? Okay, then, all right, then we'll go straight into adjourned motions, if you would all please rise. Mr. LeBange?
Thank you, Madam President. I asked Mr. Weisart to join with me here. T. Willard Hunter, who died at 93 in his Claremont home, he'd been a resident for over 50 years. He was a very special man to Los Angeles, because in 1981, he reenacted the Walk of the Las Paladoras from Mission San Gabriel. the Las Paladouras from Mission San Gabriel to the Pueblo. T. Willard Hunter, I ask we adjourn in his memory, his wife, Mary Louise, and his sons and daughters. I also ask, we adjourn in memory of Robert Mitchell, who died at 96. He was a very, very special man, who ran the Bob Mitchell Boys Choir. He was the first house musician, by the way, at LA Dodger Stadium for the Dodgers. He was a great native of Los Angeles, and a very special man. I ask to adjourn in memory of Robert Mitchell at 96. And finally, I ask we adjourn in memory of Martha Scott, who at 98, died in her apartment in Hancock Park. She is a very special person, who was a very loving mother and grandmother, an accomplished singer as well. I ask we adjourn in memory of Martha Scott, Robert Mitchell, and T. Willard Hunter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lavange. Members, are there any other adjourned motions? Well, with that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll, and the meeting is adjourned? Thank you very much.